I'll second it with some changes if he agrees.
Good evening and welcome back to this Pender County Board of Education meeting. Tonight, we are coming back in from closed session. We've somewhat changed our format. We approved that last month. Starting at five o'clock, we are going into closed session so we can hopefully get out a little bit earlier here in the evenings. So with that said, do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
I made a motion.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and we are now out of closed session. Let's see. And at this time, we will go to our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Hall?
Everyone stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's see. And right now, we have a video from Cape Fear Elementary Chorus under the direction of Heather Kurtz, and they are going to perform our national anthem and one additional song. As I said, this will be via video tonight.
Mr. President, this is grade class, and we're presenting the national anthem.
(music playing) Oh, say can you see, 'round the dawn to the light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Blue stars, bright stars, through the perilous night, o'er the rivers we watched, were so gallantly streaming. And the rockets' red glare, the whole crowd singing there, it proved to the nigh that our flag was still there. O say, 'cause the stars sang a better yet way, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.' Goodbye summer, it's sad to see you go. Goodbye summer, we saw you long ago. Blue skies, your longest days, come on a summer night. Oh, goodbye summer, goodbye. this long as days come on a summer night. Oh, goodbye, summer, goodbye. Goodbye, summer, it's time to shed a tear. Goodbye, summer, oh, when we're in the field, I wish there's other days we dream of summer nights. Oh, goodbye, summer, goodbye. Goodbye.
Well, that selection was pretty accurate. Goodbye, summer. At this time, we'll move on to number six, our invocation, Mr. Cornoragans.
Evening, Madam Chair, board members. Dr. Breedlove and Cabinet, everyone that's in attendance today. I can't speak for everybody, but I will say for Pender High School, it's been a phenomenal start to the year, and we're thankful for all the support that's been given our way. And I know that that's probably echoed multiple times across our county. So just thank you for your hard work and your effort. If you will, those vows will be opened up in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we thank you again, dear Lord, for another opportunity that we have, or to tend to the business of the children of this county. We thank you for every person that is represented here today, both individually and collectively. Heavenly Father, we just pray that you would just guide the actions of this board, that you will give them wisdom that comes from you, or that any type of situations that arise, that you'll give them the patience and the wisdom and the clarity to be able to meet them headfirst. We thank you for their service, dear Lord. We thank you that they're serving their community and they're serving their constituents. We pray for blessings over this meeting. We pray for safety and clarity that comes from you. We thank you, love you, and we praise you. As these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Agans. Appreciate you. Okay, number seven on our agenda is recognitions.
Yeah, thank you, Miss Chair. We have two recognitions tonight. First is our Director of Testee Accountability, Ms. Fallon Fuller. If you could come up quick here to, she's got some awards to hand out to two of our fantastic data managers at two of our schools for that standing work that is going on at those two schools.
Am I loud enough that I don't have to? All right. So with that being said, Infinite Campus Parent Portal has been an important part of the start of the year. We have given the initiative to the data manager to see if they could get as many parents signed up to Parent Portal. And it came to competition, and they got excited about it. And we are pleased to now say that we have over 50% of the parents signed up for the portal, which is a big difference, seeing as though we just got on it last year. So. And we also want to show the appreciation to Denise at West Pender Middle School. They have over 88%. The campus Parent Portal is how parents can communicate. They can also update information. They can view grades, attendance, and she's done a phenomenal job this year.
Yes, she has.
Yeah, Ms. Denise. Also, we have Begin Hug Gear application. And this is a big task for data managers to have to go through all that information and make sure it's accurate and get it put into computer. And this year, we had a data manager who stood out, Ms. Jen Julian at Cape Fear Middle School. She completed over 97% of the field by applications in a timely manner.
Board, would you mind coming down?
Yes.
Next, we have Dr. Brad Breedlove, who's going to be recognizing some of our schools for their excellent work in the 24-25 school year.
All right, tonight, we are presenting on accountability for our school system, as that will come up later on in the board meeting. But for tonight's recognition, you know, one of the things that, you know, we look at, obviously in accountability, is growth measures. That's sort of that equal playing field across all schools at all levels, is how much a school or a student grows during a regular school year. And the way our school system and the state is, our school system is really judged by the state, is on that accountability model. And so as a school, as a principal, as a teacher, 80% of that grade is proficiency. 20% is growth. But we all recognize that growth is really the true measure of what a school does. Does a student learn what they traditionally have? Do they score that same amount as they traditionally do? If they do, they have met growth for that year. If they don't, they have not met growth for that year. But if they actually have more learning in one year than what they traditionally have had, based on accountability, which is our testing, then they have exceeded growth. It's a complicated system, I know, but we are recognizing schools tonight that exceeded growth as a school. And so we are extremely proud of the schools being recognized. We have a banner that they will be able to hang at their school. Very proud of them. And so I'm going to call all principals up at this time at schools that exceeded growth, and we have six of them that are with us tonight. And then, Board, if we can get a picture with these schools. But we'll start off, I'm going to go alphabetically. So we're going to start off with Burgal Middle School. And what I will say, what I will say about Burgal Middle School, just really quick, is they were one school that was in the top 10% of the entire state.
Woo!
And we also have Cape Fear Elementary. You come in right away, and you get they exceeded growth. Awesome job.
All right.
Also, Malpus Corner Elementary. And just like Burgal Middle School, Malpus, you know, last year, they were considered low-performing schools. They are no longer a low-performing school because they exceeded growth. And so very proud of their work. Pender Innovative, sorry, Pender, PEX, Pender Early College. And then certainly last but not least, formerly was a state-designated low-performing school who is now a school that exceeded growth, and that's West Pender. Once again, to all of our principals who represent an entire group of students and staff that worked extremely hard last year, thank you all so much for your dedication, the hard work, and the time that you put in in growing your students. Board members, if we would, come around, let's get a picture together. No, we have one more. Sorry, Pender. I knew that was on there.
One more.
Sorry, Pender Innovative Learning Academy.
You might have to explain this one.
Yes. So.
Woo!
So, Pender Innovative Learning Academy is our alternative school here in Pender County. They are on a different model. And their model, as you can see, they are progressing as a school. That is the highest designation that an alternative school can receive. And once again, my hat's off to the students, to the faculty, and certainly Ms. Braun going in and supporting her students. Tremendous effort all year long, last year. Just a super job by all of our schools. So, once again, congratulations.
I don't know, I'm understanding. I'm all about the time, I'm just trying to.
One, two, three, excellence.
Can we get the APs out?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
What if we have like our seniors?
Yes, all the rest of the people from the village.
Take the village. Do it. Come on up.
There you go.
All right, one, two, three. Awesome.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Four more weeks.
So just for the audience, again, we're going to, I'll make sure that we get these photos out, so our people drive to the principal's access, and he will as well, so if you'd mind.
Outstanding, and thank you, everyone, so much for all that hard work. Right now, we are going to move to number eight, public comment. Tonight, we have two people signed up. Ms., number one is Ms. Heidi Mysuk, and please forgive me if I, okay. Welcome, ma'am.
Evening. Thank you for your service to our county. It must be hard to serve our community under such scrutiny and criticism, so I just want to say thank you for that. I'm not here to complain about the traffic, we all know. But I am here to offer some sort of solution, or a resolution, or something. There is every kind of truck from Jacksonville to all the way down to the ports that is using 17 as their major thoroughfare. There are tractor trailers, there are pickup trucks with machines moving, there are buses, there's garbage trucks, there's everything. The only thing I can say is, is there any way that we can communicate with the DOT or these construction companies and the two don't travel during peak times? I know that's a lot to ask. Everybody has somewhere to be at a certain time. But there's also alternative routes that they could use. They could do 50 to 53 to 210 to I-40. Just coming here today, there's a Walmart truck. Now, they're probably going to Jacksonville because they were in Wilmington, probably doing a delivery. Now, that was at 5:00, like quarter after 5:00. But is, I don't know if there's any way to communicate with these companies not to travel during peak hours. My children do not go to the Pender County schools. They go in Porter's Neck. And I take an alternate route, so I don't have to pass the school, so I'm less, one less car that I'm sitting in traffic. And the other thing that is, like, I thought of is retirees. You know, if you are retired, if you are a stay-at-home mom, make your appointments on off-peak times. Stay off the road. I don't know if there's anybody that's hearing me that are watching, if they could help out any way we can to reduce the traffic to the schools. Thank you.
Ma'am, what route do you take?
Um, I live off of Slupe Point, so I take Slupe Point to Country Club.
That's a good point, because if you look at it really, if it's backed up past the 17 restaurant, you can get out in 10 minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, just to, into perspective, when I first got onto 17 to go to, to take my children to school, the traffic was at Slupe Point. And I thought to myself, I'm not doing this every day. I'm sitting in traffic, and plus, I'm one added car. So I just figured I'll just go the other way. It takes me a couple extra minutes. I just leave a little earlier, that's all. So. I don't know if we can communicate with DOT. I know there's construction vehicles. I know people have somewhere to go. But if we could just somehow communicate to the community to stay off the road during those hours, I think it just would be helpful. So.
Yes, ma'am.
Very nice.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, number two, Lucy Roy. Welcome, Ms. Roy.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I would like to remind the board, I sent an email back in March, April, or May concerning the school start times, and wanted to remind everybody that there is legislation that prevents North Carolina public schools from starting before August 25th. If you have created a waiver, please provide that to the public so that we can see what kind of waiver you had and when it was approved to change the school start date. According to the NCDPI, you need approval from the NCDPI to start on August 10th, as you have it set up for August 26, 27, or year 2026-27. It's not, school is not supposed to start due to NC legislation, Bill summaries S-754, it's not supposed to start before August 25th. With some amendments, you have been able to start by August 19th, if you have been, if those requests were approved. If you could please provide the public with whatever remedies you were looking for to start on August 10th, and why. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, at this time, that is the, oh, excuse me, we do have a voicemail, don't we? Thank you, sir. Keep me straight.
Hi, my name is Megan. This is a public comment for the Board of Education meeting on August 26 of 2025. I have a middle school student who is at Surf City Middle, and this is, I'm calling on the 25th, so it's the first day of school. His bus is already not supposed to be coming home in the afternoon until 4:04. First day of school, I never got a notification from the middle school. It was actually Surf City Elementary who posted about late buses. And then my, I couldn't get a hold of my son, and he told me that he's not allowed to use his phone in school because there's now a school-wide ban on phones. Okay, great. So, my question is to the board, this whole three-tier bell schedule is now going to, I had to go pick my son up. I had to leave work early to go pick my son up so he could be at baseball practice by 5:30. So, if that's some- So, if that's something that I'm gonna have to do, fine, I will go pick him up, I will leave work early. I will do that because I'm his mother and that's what I do, but why is the school telling my son he can't use his phone to notify me, but the middle school never sent out any notification about late buses either? Nobody had any idea the buses were late unless they followed Surf City Elementary School. I'm not understanding the disconnect here, I'm not understanding how this is gonna change, I don't understand how the three-tier bell schedule works, I don't understand how there's supposed to be more bus drivers when in actuality the buses are now hours behind, again, you know, something, some sort of answer, some sort of response would be wonderful, because I would like my son to be home before 5 o'clock or later in the afternoon considering he has baseball practice at 5:30. Have a good day.
Mr. Lawson, was I correct in hearing that that voicemail was from the first day of school?
I can go back, I didn't hear exactly when she said.
I believe that's what she said, so that, that voicemail is, it's a couple weeks old now. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you. Onto number nine, report from our superintendent.
Well, we've wrapped up two weeks of school and learning. From day one, we've been out visiting schools and I will say that our, from day one, our students were hard at work, our teachers were hard at work, school is happening and we are in a good place right now. It's like summer really never happened. Students are back in, happy, healthy and, and moving forward. Last week, the North Carolina School Board Association, I'm sorry, the North Carolina State Board of Education approved the accountability scores and tonight we'll have some presentations on the accountability scores for Pender County. We are very encouraged by the work that was accomplished last year by our, our teachers, by our students, staff, all around and the success that we had. Certainly, like all things, we're gonna celebrate and, and do that, and we have been, but it's also time to get back to work and we know that as we have a, a new cohort of students and, and new grade levels and, and trying to improve the things that we need to improve as well, but just really excited about that. I want to give a big shout out to our students, our families, our teachers, administrators for the hard work last year. And also, just a couple of reminders, upcoming events, we have a Special Olympics Planning Committee meeting tomorrow night at 5:30 over at Heidi Trask High School for our community that wants to be a part of that. We are bringing Special Olympics back to Pender County schools and that, and we're really excited about that for this upcoming school year, so this is our first meeting as a planning committee meeting. Also, on September the 23rd, 6:15, Pender County Marching Bands Showcase, also at Heidi Trask High School. It's the first time that we've done that and, and so that's gonna be a, a great event for anyone that wants to come out to Heidi Trask High School to see our marching bands here in Pender County. Also, on September 26th, Pender Early College High School has their selections for their houses and they will be marching around as a procession around downtown Burgal, around the courthouse, and then back to Early College. This is what they did last year, is really excited to see the students out there, this is a big day for them. Tuesday, September 30th, we do have our committee of the whole, and then on October the 14th, that's the next regular scheduled board meeting. Once again, closed session, we'll start at 5, going into closed session, and then the meeting will officially start at 6 o'clock afterwards. Board members, that concludes superintendent's report, thank you.
Thank you Dr. Breedlove. Moving on, number 10, our information agenda, right now, 10.1 draft financial audit for school year ending June 30th, 2025. We did, and that is 10.1 now.
Good afternoon, board members. I'd like to present our independent auditor, Andy Deal, he's from Anderson Smith &amp; White, and he will present to your audit finding.
Good evening, hope everyone's doing well. My name is Andy Deal, I'm a partner with the accounting firm Anderson Smith &amp; White, we're the auditors for Pender County Schools. I'm here tonight to give a summary of the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. So, keep in mind, all the amounts we're talking about tonight are as of and for the year ended June 30th, 2025. One thing you'll notice if you look at the, the bound copy of your financial statements, it is marked draft. The reason it's marked draft is the federal OMB has not released the final compliance supplements for this year. The compliance supplements are basically issued by the oversight agencies that tell us what to audit or what to look at during our audit. We do have a draft of those compliance supplements, but we don't have the final version, so we can't issue the final financial statements until we get the final copy. You know, we don't anticipate any big changes or, or any changes to these financial statements, but that is why it's marked draft. If anybody has any questions when we're going through the, the presentation tonight, feel free to stop me. And basically, we'll, we'll focus on this PowerPoint presentation here. In the PowerPoint, we've pretty much pulled out all the important pages of the financial statements, so, so we can focus on those. There's three or four audit reports in these financial statements. The first one here is our audit report on the, the financial statements themselves, the numbers, and this report basically tells you are the financial statements in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. We're pleased to report, this is an unmodified report. An unmodified report is the cleanest report you can get. The reason we call it unmodified, that means we didn't note anything like an audit finding or something that would cause us to modify our audit report. So, we're pleased to report that our report on the financial statements is unmodified, which is the cleanest report you can get. The other three audit reports all deal with compliance, like compliance with federal and state grants, and we'll touch on those later. This next slide here, this is the balance sheet for the governmental funds, so this is gonna be all the funds in the school district except for your child nutrition fund and your childcare fund. Your child nutrition and childcare fund, they have different accounting rules, more similar to a for-profit company, so their financial statements are in a different part and, and we'll go over those later. This page right here is probably one of the most, two important pages in the financial statements. This is gonna give you a snapshot of the financial condition of the board as of June 30th, 2024. One number I want to highlight, if you look at the first column here, here's your general fund, and as of June 30th, 2025, we're reporting just over $11 million of fund balance in our general fund. So, for a district your size, you are in great financial condition compared to a lot of other districts your size. You know, across the state, we're really seeing districts start to lose fund balance and, and they're really struggling to maintain fund balance and, you know, right now, y'all are in, in great shape financially, but I do think that the coming years, we are gonna see cuts in the near term, so we just want to do everything we can to, to maintain and try not to lose fund balance. This next slide is the second most important page in the financial statements. This is the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance for those same governmental funds. You could call this an income statement of P&amp;L, but it's, if you look at the, the actual copy in the financial statements, it's more detailed, but this is gonna give you a pretty detailed look at all the revenues and, and the expenses of the board. Again, we'll focus on the general fund here, so for the year ended June 30th, 2025, we had a increase in fund balance of about 1.6 million, started the year with 9.7 million, ended the year with 11.3 million of fund balance. Most districts that we're seeing across the state lost fund balance during the year ended June 30th, 2025, so the fact that we ended the year with a 1.6 million dollar gain, that's great news for the school district. I mentioned earlier, the school nutrition fund and the childcare fund have different accounting rules. Due to those accounting rules, they are required to put these massive liabilities like for the state health plan, the state pension plan, they're required to record those liabilities in their financial statements. What this does, this really muddies the water when you're trying to figure out how well did the program do? Did they make money? Did they lose money? These liabilities are calculated at the state level by an actuary and basically just divided up amongst the districts. So, the one thing I like to look at when you're trying to determine the health of the program is the statement of cash flows, and just like it says, the statement of cash flows is gonna show you, okay, did the district make cash? Did they lose cash? So, for the year ended June 30th, 2025, the program had a $700,000 loss in cash for the school nutrition program for the year. Again, we're seeing this pretty much across the board, we all go to the grocery store, food costs are through the roof, also labor costs have really went up in the past few years and that's really put a strain on this program. Your USDA revenues are pretty much flat and your food and labor costs have greatly increased and that's basically just put a strain on your cash balance. The good news is your ending cash balance is 3.9 million, so as of June 30th, 2025, we ended the year with pretty much $4 million in cash, which is a strong position given a district your size.
Can I stop you for a second? You know with the food, that we, we did some changes, I think we're during this, this particular year, right? Yeah. Yeah, I don't, do you see that, is that sustainable? I mean, I know in the short term, yes, but...
The, like, CEP changes or what?
We increased, we gave them an increased cost price on our contract when we were talking about the increase in the contract expense.
I'll be honest, Donna, it's gonna be very hard, you know, it's definitely something we want to keep an eye on, because, you know, this year we lost 700,000. Your district currently has too much cash per the state standards. If you have over three months operating cash, the state tells you to spin that down. The problem is, if you keep, you know, if we keep losing 700,000 a year, eventually it'll be zero, and then, once it gets negative, the general fund has to bail them out. That's why I always focus on the general fund, because it's basically your financial cushion. So, you know, we're, what we're seeing across the state is, is COVID kinda put a Band-Aid on things during COVID, everybody ate free, the USDA reimbursements were greatly increased, that's went away now and we're starting to see, you know, school districts across the state are basically losing cash in their program and, and even to the point where they're having to get a special appropriation from the county to subsidize the program just for the school nutrition program. So, you know, y'all aren't there yet, but it's definitely something to keep an eye on, because, you know, I'm not aware of any changes in your USDA revenues that's gonna cause that to increase. So, if your revenues barely go up and your costs great, yeah, it's, it's gonna be tough.
Right, now I just wanted to, thanks for explaining that, I just want the public to hear it and, sounds like we're fine for the moment, but we just have to keep an eye on it, so.
Exactly, you know, nothing to be alarmed about yet, but always want to keep an eye on it. Next, we'll go over our audit reports on compliance. There's three reports on compliance. Our first one is our report on internal control over financial reporting and internal control over compliance. We do have an unmodified opinion here, but we did note one audit finding. The finding wasn't so major that we had to modify our audit report, but we'll go over the finding later. Our next audit report is on the major federal programs, and this is an unmodified report with no findings. And then our final audit report is our report on the major state programs, and again, this is an unmodified report or clean report with no audit findings. I mentioned before, we had one finding, we noted a few instances where there were some bus drivers that started out as part-time employees, and then once you get over 30 hours a week, you're eligible for retirement. So, we did note some that started out as part-time but then crept over that 30-hour threshold, but retirement wasn't withheld for these employees. We, we did note a few instances of that, so we do have an audit finding for that, and I'll, I'll let Lisa go over just kind of what they've done to, to correct that issue.
And just to let you know, we now have three different departments verifying and watching those employees. We have HR for the benefit side of it, payroll, and then transportation will be reviewing those employees on a, probably a monthly to quarterly basis, so we have three different groups monitoring that.
And then, on top of that, due to auditing standards, we'll have to really dig into that during our next audit, just to make sure there's, you know, no issues, increase our sample sizes there, just to make sure that has been corrected, so. And then that was our only audit finding related to compliance. During the 2024 audit, we did have one finding, the district was over budget in the federal grants fund. We noted that has been corrected, there are no line items, line items over budget for the current fiscal year, so we had no line items over budget, so the prior year finding for being over budget has been corrected. Next, we've just got some charts here that just kinda go over basically fund balance like I keep talking about, I keep harping on it, because, you know, for a school district, you can't really increase revenues, there's, there's nothing you can do to increase sales, it's all about, you know, what are you getting from, you know, the state government, the federal government, the local government, and then what are your costs? This first chart here just shows your revenue over time, you can kinda see in 2020 where the COVID funds kicked in. Basically, your, your federal revenues are this, this dark color here, and you can see how that really increased during COVID with the COVID relief funds. Those funds are now gone, so that's gonna be another strain on fund balance. Here is your COVID-19 related revenue since 2020. So, in 2020, 2021, about 3 million, '22, about 9, 10 million, '23, down to 7 million, '24, 11 million, and then this year, about 3 million, and then this current fiscal year, '25, '26, it'll be zero. You're gonna feel that, you know, losing that significant of amount of revenue, you know, y'all are in great shape and, and you're better prepared than most districts at, at losing this, but you're, you know, everybody's gonna feel that, those are huge numbers that we're gonna lose. This is our fund balance over time, and again, you can see really, in 2020, it really started going up and, you know, being honest, that's just utilizing those stimulus revenues to, to help maintain and grow fund balance. This chart here is one I love to go over, because this chart here really puts it into perspective of why it's so hard to maintain fund balance, and this is the reason a lot of districts are losing fund balance. So, this is basically, the first column is the district's pension contribution, the next column is your post-employment healthcare contribution, and then the total. And keep in mind, when we say post-employment healthcare, that's healthcare you get when you retire. This doesn't include their current health insurance. And then here we have our covered employees. So, if you go back five years to 2021, we had just over 1,000 covered employees, five years before, now we have just, just under 1,200. So, we've got a 13% increase in covered employees, but our retirement costs have increased 54%. So, our retirement costs went from 11 million to 17 million, and our covered employees went from 1,033 to 1169. That's one of the main reasons you're seeing districts across the state lose fund balance. These retirement rates that the district has to pay, nobody in this room has any control over those rates. Those rates are set by Raleigh and you have to pay them for every employee, whether it's a state employee, a federal employee, locally funded employee, you gotta pay it for all of them. If Raleigh increases the retirement rate, that doesn't mean they're sitting there in Washington DC going, oh man, North Carolina increased their retirement rate, we gotta give them more Title I funding, we gotta give them more Title VI funding. Even your state dollar allotments, they're not increased when these rates go up. So, you know, this chart really puts it into perspective of just why it's so hard to, to maintain the fund balance. The same goes with raises too, when the state mandates are raised, that doesn't mean you're getting more funding from the state, federal government to pay that raise. All the board members have two letters, the first letter is our required communications letter, this basically just, due to auditing standards, there are certain communications that we are required to have with the board in writing. I'll just go over just a couple paragraphs in it. We didn't have any disagreements with... We didn't have any disagreements with management in completing our audit. When we do a federal and state single audit, we're asking for tons of documentation, a lot of questions. At Pender County Schools, I'm pleased to report, no matter how big a list we give them, we get all the documentation. It's complete. We get it in a timely manner. When we ask questions, we don't get a vague response that leaves us asking more questions. So, pleased to report, we didn't have any, you know, disagreements or difficulties completing the audit. And then, also, we didn't note any accounting misstatements during the audit that were big. There's always normal audit adjustments, but nothing out of the ordinary, nothing material that we had to do to get the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. So, pleased to report, no difficulties. Pleased to report, no misstatements. The second letter is just a management letter. So, the management letter basically is a finding we noted, but it's not significant enough where it's reported in the bound financial statements. There is a state rule that says the State Public School Fund must transfer $45,000 to the School Nutrition Fund to help pay administrative salaries. Due to oversight, that transfer was not made during the year we audited. However, this year, the transfer will be made just to correct it. And, you know, that is something that happens. That's something that we've seen before. It's just, you know, due to oversight, sometimes they forget to go in and make that transfer from the State Public School Fund to the Child Nutrition Fund, but it will be made this year to correct it for the prior year. That's all I have tonight. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask them.
I don't have any, but wow. Thank you. And thank you to Ms. Nalan and her staff for their professionalism and getting this completed.
I agree. I've been on this board for seven years, and I came on when Betsy Chestnut was here. And I can also say, Ms. Nalan has continued that legacy of excellence with her finance office. And I know that you always give credit to your ladies who work with you also, but a great job, and thank you.
That's one of the biggest compliments I can take, being referred to as like Betsy Chestnut. We still do lunch. We still talk. It's really nice to be able to fill those shoes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. 10.2, Boys and Girls Club.
Good afternoon, board. I want to just take a minute to introduce Mr. Keith Williams of the Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern North Carolina, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. He can explain it way better than anything I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bree Love, Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Taylor, anybody that I've worked with as we have tried to enter Pender County, I just want to say thank you. There was two reasons I wanted to come tonight, and one, it did my heart good to see all of the praise because I know educators and people in education are underpaid and underpraised. So, the beginning of your meeting tonight was heartwarming, the things that you guys did. I was hoping I could see some of these teachers and principals before they left, but, I mean, that just does your heart good. Y'all are doing an outstanding job here. We enjoyed our partnership. When we were here for the summer, we had a robust camp. It was maxed out. The great thing about that camp was every instructor in that camp was a member of that teacher or principal at that school. So, everyone was there. They knew those. So, I just want to say thank you as number one. Number two, I just want to say that we want to be here. You know, we've received several messages. We've seen emails that are out floating, you know, Hamstead Moms, Facebook postings that, you know, there's an overflow. There's a waiting list in a lot of the after-school programs. We want to be here, and I've been working with Dr. Sawyer. She's outstanding. She's done a great job, and I feel like she's trying to find a place for us to fit. So, what we just want to say as Boys and Girls Clubs of Southeastern North Carolina, when she comes back with that proposal, we're gonna give it 100%. We want to serve. We want to do all we can. No matter how many youth-serving organizations come into any county, you will not serve all the kids. We know that. I represent five counties. There's more than enough kids to go around. But, the thing is, is we know when a child's on a waiting list of any sort within the organization, there's a parent that's not working, or there's a parent that's having, as this parent said, there's a parent that's having to leave work early to go take care of those children. So, you know, as Dr. Sawyer is working very hard at finding a place for us, we just want to say we want to be here. We want to serve, and we look forward to working with her. So, if anybody has questions for us or what we do or about the Boys and Girls Clubs, I would love to answer them.
Briefly tell me about your programs.
Our programs, I mean, look, Mr. Reeves, because we've got a... We have many, many programs, and that's... I'm not gonna knock any rec center or anything like that. The Boys and Girls Clubs is really, really into the instruction and educational. Health and wellness programs we have, and these are, as I've always said, we have to do educational programs in order to get paid. Boys and Girls Clubs of America, based on how many programs we run, the attendance in those programs, the results of those programs is what we get our funding from the Boys and Girls Clubs. Health and wellness, we have a program called Triple Play. We have Smart Moves. We have Smart Girls. We have Healthy Habits. Education and career development programs. We have Project Learn, Power Hour, Summer Brain Game, Computer Science Pathway, DIY STEM. Character and Leadership Development. We have Keystone Clubs, Passport to Manhood. And the arts programs, we have Image Makers, and I'll be glad to explain what any of those are, but we have to run at least three or four programs every fall. Now, I like to tell people that every group of kids are different, so we pick what fits. Now, Power Hour is something we run at every one of ours. That's a one-hour after-school. It's a mentoring, and it's homework time. It's quiet time. We get the homework done first. Power Hour is something we run regardless. We believe in the fact that if a parent picks up a child at 6:00 or 6:30 when our camp closes, they have to get dinner, they have to have, you know, get the baths and stuff. The last thing they need to do is homework, right? So, that's what we try to do there in Power Hour. Some of our heavy programs are Smart Money Matters and Smart Moves and Healthy Habits. Those are very, very educational on the children, and I'll just give you a brief on healthy habits. You flip over the nutrition guides on the back of snacks or treats, right? When those kids leave our program, they know this one has this much fat, this much calorie, or this one has this much, and they're trying to convince mom and dad to eat a healthier snack. Money Matters, we teach kids how to spend money, how to save money. We partner with two banks right now, First Bank and Marine Federal, and also, we work with Nations Bank down in Wilmington. But, they'll come in and do the Money Matters, and what they do with that, they teach kids how, like I said, to spend and save money. If you buy a pack of nabs at the store for a dollar, or you can go to Sam's Club and buy a 12, you know, a case of 12 or whatever for three or four dollars, that's teaching them how to spend money wisely. So, all of our programs are proven evidence and proven results from the Boys and Girls Clubs of America. So, anything else?
How many do you serve in Onslow?
Right now, and we have, just keep in mind, we have three different categories. We have an after-school program. We have morning care, and then, we have summer camp. Right now, we have 484 enrolled in Onslow County. We have seven elementary schools, one middle school, one community center in a Title I apartment complex, and we just, last week, closed on a 17,000-square-foot standalone building that we are working on filling up. So, once that fills up, that holds 250 additional kids. We're right now at 149 in our morning care. We're running that at two locations that, you know, needed morning care. And then, at our summer camps, we run 500. We run 125 at four locations, which will give us about 500. So, at any point during the summer when we do our results, like you just saw from your audit, Onslow serves around 1,200 kids a year.
So, you've heard, you know the traffic problems in Hamstons. So, if you had children at Cape Fear or Surf City Elementary, you wouldn't bus them out of there to somewhere else?
We would prefer not to bus any kids.
So, their parents would have to go across town to get them?
No, sir. We... Our model is, with the exception of New Hanover County where we have three gymnasiums, swim pool, and that's where you bus them over for that freestanding location. The rest of our models, Duplin County, Brunswick County, Onslow County, and what we were doing here is an in-school model. It does several things. One, there's no liability. There's no transportation. It cuts back on your budget where there's less charge to the parents and the schools because you don't have the buses, you don't have the CDL drivers that are expensive, and you don't have the insurance that goes along with those buses. And then, the other thing is when we come in and the children walk, let's say, five minutes from the classroom to the cafeteria or the gymnasium where we're at, we start programming right away. If they're on a bus and we have to take them to a civic center or a church, and it takes an hour to get through traffic, outside of that liability, there's an hour of programming lost. That's an hour of homework time. Or, some of these other programs that we do, which we need to squeeze in in order for, one, the educational purpose, and, two, for the pay that we get through Boys and Girls Clubs of America. Good questions.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you staff your before and after-school programs?
That's interesting. We want, ideally, we want our staff to come from the school. And that's for many, many reasons. If we can get them in, and I always say, a principal, some of our best employees are custodial workers, nutrition workers, they know the habits of these kids. They know if they're having a bad day, that it's typical. If they're having a bad day, then that's not normal for this child, how we can address it. They know the parents. Right down when it comes to needing supplies for what we need, cleaning supplies, they know where to go get it because the principal and those teachers have a great relationship. But, outside of that, you know, we get them throughout the community. I can tell you in Onslow County, now, we've been there 22 years, but right now, in our Indeed account, we have 288 applicants waiting to go to work in Onslow County. And that's working part-time. These are people, you know, like I said, once we vet them, if they qualify, you know, we just weed through them, but we've been very blessed to be able to stay full up there.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think we would here. This is a growing community, as you guys know. Any other questions for me?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I've been to a couple of your fundraiser breakfasts before, and I've seen the longer presentation with all the programs that you guys offer, and definitely, I believe that we would be, you know, collaboration would definitely be a good thing with you guys.
Right. And it's... And I will say, in fairness to Dr. Sawyer, that's worked so hard on it. It's stuff that, it just doesn't happen overnight because you have to find a fit. We get asked all the time, well, why don't your club, working in conjunction with this club, when you mingle kids and there's two different groups, they need to go to the restroom, or there's two different groups that need to be on the playground? That's tough, and it's hard for the school systems. It's hard for both programs to keep up with it. So, I know we'll find a way. It just takes, it just takes work, and it takes time. You know, we're new in town. I know when Dawn Michelle and I met with you, Dr. Bree Love, and Dr. Bree Love, where have you guys been? We've been in and out of Pender County on and off for different occasions, mostly 21st Century Grant. When you get the 21st Century Grant, then you don't get awarded on the next cohort, and it's hard to go from free to anything. So, once you do that, then you leave. Now, we did serve for many, many years in three churches in Rocky Point, one in Burgal, and two in Hamstead. So, but as church ministrations change and boards change, the pastor changes, the kids get caught running up and down in the sanctuary, running sprints, and like my grandma would beat you to death if you did that in sanctuary. It's just, that's not the ideal fit, but we tried to make that work as well. Anyone else? Well, thank you so much for the time, and God bless you all for what you do.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Okay. Onto our next agenda item, 10.3, 2024-25 PCS Accountability Update.
All right. As I mentioned earlier, the State Board of Education met last week and approved the state accountability results, and so, for tonight, we're able to present to you the Pender County Schools accountability for the 2024-25 school year. Joining us at the podium tonight, we have Dr. Brandy Sawyer, who's our Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Fallon Fuller, who is our Pender County Schools Director of Testing and Accountability. Ms. Fuller is going to talk about really the accountability model. Like I said earlier, it's very complicated, but she's gonna put it in a way that we can all understand it and does a good job with that. And then, Dr. Sawyer will take over the presentation and talk about our results from last year. Also on hand with us tonight is Dr. Sonya Oates, who's our Director of Elementary, and Dr. Alyssa Lee, who is our Secondary Director. If there are any questions, they'll be here to help answer some of those. So, Dr. Sawyer, Ms. Fuller, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you can see, it takes a team in the accountability world, and I'm very lucky to be a part of an amazing team. Also with us tonight is Mr. Dominique Bates, the CTE Director. We also have Ms. Kendy Walker, our EC Director. And then, Ms. Lindsey Graham is our EL Coordinator for the district, so they are all here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Okay? So, as you can see, this evening, these are going to be the topics that we're going to discuss with you and our community stakeholders. Any point throughout the presentation, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop us in the middle, or you can take questions, and there'll be time at the end for that as well. So, as Dr. Bree Love stated earlier, on Wednesday, September 3rd, the State Board of Education approved all the data and all the official results for it to be released to the public. We are very excited for our schools, so a big congratulations again to students and staff for all their hard work. There's a lot of things to celebrate for our group. On this presentation slide as well, if you click the link, it will take you to DPI's website where you can see all the data, all the reports. It's a lot. It's overwhelming. So, if you get the opportunity to do that, just give me a call. I'm happy to walk through anything you have, any questions, as it breaks it up by subgroups and all of the other information. Okay? So, this is what the indicators you see listed makes up our school's accountability model. So, our team this evening is going to discuss each one of these items on following slides for you by their department. I do want to note that our NC Extend 1 assessments that our students take, who are on Extended Content Standards, are included in the performance model. And for our EL progress, it is students in grades three through eight at the elementary and middle school level. For our high school level, it is only our 10th-grade students, and you must have a total of 30 students in order to have that included in your accountability model. Okay? As we know, these are how our students are scored, so they can receive a non-proficient. For those of us that were in school, those used to be ones and twos. Now, it's just a non-proficient score. Students that we consider to be at grade level will score a three, four, or a five, and our students who score a four or a five is what tells us that our students are on track to be career and college-ready. All right? So, as Dr. Bree Love spoke about earlier, those indicators that we just saw broke down by grade level is 80%, and then, the EVOs growth counts for 20% of their school performance grade, and their school performance grades are on another slide, so we will share that 15-point scale score with you of where our schools fail and how close some of them were to an A, how close some of them were to a B, so you can kind of see and measure that as well. Okay? And then, Dr. Sawyer is going to talk about kind of where we fell as a district in regards to the state.
So, for 24-25 school year, we always like to look at where we are in comparison to others in the Southeast region, New Hanover, Pender, Onslow, and Brunswick. Out of the 15 indicators, at the top of it is the state of North Carolina. We scored... We scored higher than the state of North Carolina in, um, all of the indicators except for one. Um, however, even though we didn't, uh, score higher than, we did increase that number by 6% on EL progress. So Pender County Schools sits at about eight indicators, the highest in the county, in, in the county region, um, where we are higher than New Hanover, Onslow, and Brunswick, and knocking on the door on some of those, um, that we didn't quite make it as the highest. Um, our goal in Pender County is to be the best, so that, that's what we strive to do. And this, this is all the indicators that we have. The Work Keys, ACT, um, math course rigor, four-year and five-year graduation cohorts, your EOGs and EOCs combined. Um, then you look at reading in 3-8, math in 3-8, science in 5-8, uh, biology, which is high school, um, English 2, math 1, and math 3, which are all your high schools, and then your EL progress. So to continue, um, I am going to invite Dr. Oats, um, and Dr. Lee, and Dominique Bates up to go through some of the data that are specific to levels. So we'll start with elementary. I'll do it for you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, um, Dr. Bree Love Cabinet. So, um, these are our elementary scores. Um, even though, um, uh, most of all of our elementary schools show growth, um, elementary proficiency levels did reflect a slight overall decline this year, with the most significant decrease in third and fifth grade. Several factors, we believe, contributed to these results. In third grade, which was our previous second graders, may have experienced a dip in performance due to the new North Carolina check-in 2.0. Um, it's now called NC PAT, which is the North Carolina Personalized Assessment. When students take this assessment, the student performance data throughout the school year, um, is to inform their, actually inform their EOG. Um, so it is a multi-stage adaptive EOG based on the NC check-ins. In fifth grade, the current cohort was already our lowest performing group last year in fourth grade. They continue to make slower gains, though they are progressing. This group has trended a weaker cohort, partly because they miss early foundational literacy instruction, such as Haggerty and Foundations in the first grade. And also, we believe that, um, our fifth grade science scores were attributed to the Norman Year for New Science Standards and assessments combined with also the new North Carolina check-in 2.0. But growth for these cohorts remains steady. We know there's still work to be done, but we are continuing to improve. To support these cohorts and all of our students' success, we are strengthening instruction by adding flexible grouping in all of our elementary schools, providing curriculum coaching to assist both administrators and teachers in our implementation of our curriculums. We are also expanding our Walk to Read Model, which we started in our summer school this year that we saw great success in. So two of our schools will be continuing that Walk to Read Model, and that simply means that we will be looking at students and flexing students across interventions so that teachers can focus on targeted lesson planning. We will also be using to strengthen our science scores, continue with Smithsonian Science to provide students with engaging problem learning experiences. Teachers will also, um, have a Resource Generation Genius, which is an interactive platform that will help them support vocabulary, um, hands-on experiences, and help us to close some gaps. In addition, we will be using the, um, coach books that have now updated our standards to our new science standards to also help during intervention time to be able to increase practice, mastery, and vocabulary. With the continued dedication of all of our teachers, staff, students, and families, we look forward to the growth and accomplishments to come.
Good afternoon, you guys.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great. How are you guys? All right, good.
Goodbye, nobody listens.
All right. That's right. So this is, uh, the data for our middle school, which is all ELGs. Um, if you see, we are trending up. Uh, we've worked really hard this year in our middle school, which was kind of our focus this year. Um, we have a slight decrease in our ELG 8. We also have a decrease in our reading 7 and science 8. Just like Dr. Oats said, in 2022-23, the new standards came out. Um, the new testing came out last year. Um, this is the first time that I can remember that the state actually counted the scores after they redone the, uh, testing. Um, I don't know why, but they counted them this year, and as a result, we are at a decline. Um, in high school, we have a slight decrease in our biology, our English 2, and our math 1. And our math 1, students are, more and more of our high school students are taking NC math 1. They qualify upon the House Bill 986 that says students that are, uh, scoring at the highest level should have the opportunity to take math 1 in middle school. Um, even though our math 1 is, as you see, it says 40.50, I just want to read out some of our, well, not surrounding counties, I'll just do the state, even though it's public knowledge, because I know you guys couldn't see the slide. But math 1 for 912 across the state is at 34.5% proficient. To put it in perspective, that's across the state. So the 40.5, when you're looking at it in isolation, it looks horrible, but when you compare it to the state like we do in statistics, uh, we look, okay, it's not the bar we want to set, but we're doing pretty good. And we are higher than everybody around us, just to put that in perspective. All right. In English 2, we are at, um, a negative 3. And then, like I said, biology is a negative 5. Um, but again, for all three of those areas, we're higher than the state, and we're higher than everybody around us in biology, English 2, and math 1.
Any thoughts about why biology?
Biology, new, new standards, new assessment, yes. So, yeah, it's gone to inquiry-based learning instead of, we used to say that science was a vocabulary test, but now you, it's a lot of applications, it's a scientific process. You're looking at graphs, you're looking at data, you're analyzing it. So, mhm, it's more application, so. Um, our ACT 11 is 14.90, and I attribute a lot of that to our great superintendent, Dr. Bree Love, who preaches about ACT in attendance on a daily basis. Thank you, Dr. Bree Love. But we are at a 10, uh, 14.9% increase. Our math 3 is at a 10% increase. Um, Work Keys 12 is at a 12.30. Dominique, you want to say something about Work Keys 12?
So Work Keys is the exam that our CTE concentrators take. If they follow a pathway of study in CTE, um, they take this exam. Uh, they get a national certification. It's called the National, um, Career Rating Certification. And, um, they score silver or higher, silver, gold, or platinum, um, then they count on the positive side. That means they're proficient for us. And so, um, that has increased from last school year, uh, 12.3%.
And then we have ACT slash Work Keys. Fallon, you want to talk a little bit about that combination?
Sure. So for ACT and Work Keys, they look at all 12th graders, and we take one of the highest. So if they score a 19 for this particular year, or if they score, like, um, Dominique said, the silver or better, they are counted in this, um, ACT/Work Keys combination. So what our CDCs do is they look at the junior year for ACT scores, and that helps them with making sure we're testing those kids for Work Keys accreditation as well. Um, this year, I do want to say for the 25-26 school year, the ACT composite score has dropped. It will be a 17 now and not a 19.
So we should see an increase.
Oh, this is me. Our four-year cohort graduation rate is still in the 90s. And again, we are above the state and our surrounding, um, districts. And I really contribute this to individualizing pathways for students. In high school, every student, regardless of any level of learning, has a path to success for whatever they want to do post-high school. We counsel with our students as far as, uh, CTE. Our counselors counsel with them, what is your plan? Um, are you going military? Are you going to workforce? Are you going to community college? It is a path for everyone, so we try to set everyone up for success. And that's the reason why we have trended higher than the state and four-year graduation rate.
So credentials, uh, we really push our credentials. And, um, you know, it's very important for our students to earn these credentials. Um, it's another indicator that we are setting our students up for success. We're giving our students a competitive advantage. Um, proud to say that we have been in the top 10 in North Carolina in credential attainment past two years. Um, this year, we should be back in the top 10 again for credential attainment, but there's just, um, continuous growth. And we're continuing to look into, um, you know, what industry-recognized credentials, uh, what other ones we can get for our students, uh, for the courses that we, that we offer and for our local workforce demands, uh, just to try to set them up for success. So, um, we're going to keep pushing on that. But last year, we earned 7,468 at an 88% rate. And so, you know, we're just going to continue to push.
And, and I just have to interject. Could you go back to that?
Yes, please.
Look at that, y'all. I mean, that is huge. And thank you and all of your people for that, Mr. Bates. It's...
The teachers and the students, they did what they were supposed to do.
That is impressive. Thank you, sir.
So while we, as Pender County, have much to celebrate in regards to the district, um, we also want to recognize our schools on the individual performance. You saw that this evening, a lot of our schools, six of them exceeded growth. Some of them went from not met last year to exceeded, so they, um, definitely deserve to be celebrated. We did have some schools that went from not met to met. Um, so you can see that on the slide as well. Um, so 15 of the 18 schools met or exceeded growth. Um, Pender County Schools decreased from six low-performing to three low-performing schools. And then also a big shout out to Pila. Um, I love working with Ms. Braun. She really digs into her data. Um, we look at her numbers quite often. Um, and they went the highest that you can get, um, which is progressing. And there was only 18 alternative schools in the state of North Carolina who achieved that accomplishment.
So we are very excited that all of our elementary schools met or exceeded growth, um, in reading this year. Um, as you can see, uh, from the slide, although, um, Pender Leah and CF Popper still carry a low-performing designation, they both met expectations or met growth. Moving forward, um, support would be in both of those schools. Both schools would benefit from the advanced teacher roles this year. Um, both schools will have an adult teacher leader and/or a classroom excellence teacher supporting the building, as well as targeted support from our early literacy specialists and the implementation of effective literacy walkthroughs, which are walkthroughs to help provide information to principals to make sure that reading instruction is aligned with the science of reading.
Next is middle school. Um, all our schools, uh, exceeded growth in math. Um, our only middle school that's low performing right now is Pender Lee, and we will be adding extra support for Pender Lee. In high school, we have one, which is Pender High. Again, Pender High will be a focus, um, this year for our high schools. Um, as they said earlier, Pender Early College was maintaining. Last year, in order to be maintained, you had to have a negative 2.9 to 2.9. Um, Ms. Braun and her team is progressing, which means that they are plus 3 or higher.
Um, I'd like to invite Ms. Kendy Walker up to go over a key takeaway. Oh, is that mine? Am I doing this? Oh, I'm doing this one. Awesome. So, key takeaways. Um, some of this you've already heard. 15 of 18 schools met or exceeded growth. Um, we decreased from six to three low-performing schools. Our students earned over 7,400 credentials with an 88% attainment rate. Um, with our new curriculum at elementary and middle school, we are still making gains in math and reading, um, being in our second year at the middle schools and going into our third year at the elementary schools. Um, all of our elementary schools met or exceeded growth in reading. All of our middle schools met or exceeded growth in math. Our high school graduation rate still remains above, um, in the 90s, above the state average. Math 3, overall 10% increase. ACT/Work Keys, um, we increased our proficiency there as well. We did have an overall decrease in science 5-8 and biology. And, um, again, the new state standards, the new norming of the assessment, um, we have created plans specifically for science to address the need to make sure that they have what they need, um, in those areas. Now, Ms. Kendy Walker.
So I'm the, I'm the...
You're the wrap-up.
Do better. Um, nice to see everybody. Um, I will, I want to say, not on this slide, but this team is absolutely amazing. I have never had such cohesion, and we're all on the same page in supporting all of our schools, our staff, our students, and we're making a difference, but we have a lot more work to do, which is our next steps. Um, so school improvement plans are being completed, um, posted on the website by November 1st. Um, due to the Board, the 28th, and final approval by December 1st. We actually had a meeting already about this this morning. Um, so we're, we're already in the works with schools. Um, the low-performing schools are the continued priority, um, from us and anyone else that can offer support. We're working with them. Um, continuing support in math and ELA, um, and strategies. How can we help? How can we, you know, give our teachers more tools to help them and their students be successful? Walkthroughs, um, all the members on this team, we did walkthroughs last year, and we're doing them again. So there's just everybody's eyes, um, you know, how can we support? How can we help, working together as a team? Um, professional development for teachers administrations focusing on curriculum standards and strategies, um, just for those struggling learners, um, and honoring the implementation that's ongoing. And our science curriculum support, um, and plans to monitor the curriculum, especially since, you know, a lot of it is new and we're still getting adjusted to that. Um, and of course, my area, always developing a plan for our exceptional students. What can we do better? How can we get them more access? All the things. Because we want, you know, I want to see, I want, I want us to be at the top of the stage, just for my department alone, so. Um, and working with principals and developing tutoring plans. How can we give students more and help them with some of those gaps and things they may be missing?
Questions?
Excuse me, ma'am.
About yourself.
Oh, sorry. So, hands down, your team is doing a great job. But we do see that performance needs to come up something in schools. I hear you say, I've heard it several times tonight, support. Y'all are on the ground, y'all are making this happen, right? What do you need? You see it every time. Tell me what support you need.
I mean...
Tutors?
Yeah.
We need, we need tutors in buildings. Um, I mean, we've, we, we know the research says the more visible you are, right? The more improvement you get. Um, so we're trying to be out there, be visible, be supportive to principals, and really asking them what they need from us. Because I don't know what they need until they tell me what they need. Um, today, we met with, with three principals, just the low-performing, um, just to talk about, what do we need to do? What do you need from us? Like, where do we need to go with this? And it'll be an ongoing process of looking at the data, supporting them in that way. Um, I don't know if you have anything to add?
We, for the first time, uh, we have an ATR grant that we are, uh, implementing. And, and really, we're taking in several of our schools, our best, uh, teachers, or some of our best teachers. Our schools are full of, of great teachers, but some of our best teachers, and they are teaching side by side with other teachers that, um, either are new to Pender County or, uh, may need some areas of improvement. And so we are, and, and what's nice about that is that those ATR teachers also own some of the accountability in that classroom. Um, and so it's not just on one teacher, it's on both of them. And so our, our best and brightest are working side by side with, um, our teachers. So we're already doing that, but I, I do like, uh, Dr. Sawyer's answer of tutors. Nothing replaces, um, a good quality tutor. But the tutoring has to be ongoing, it has to be consistent, and, um, every day. And not just to, uh, a small group of students, all students. Uh, and so focusing on math is, is going to be key, uh, but it's tough to find, because, you know, we want, we want tutors to be... But it's tough to find, because, you know, we want, we want tutors to be able to pass math tests, right? If they're gonna tutor the students in that. And so we are working on to try and identify these individuals, to go in. And, and you also have to have the schedule to allow students to be pulled in small groups, three to four maximum. You can't do whole class and that, that's just regular teaching. So we, we have to, we have to be able to identify the students, the need, put them with a tutor that is teaching what the teacher needs them to, to teach to those students in a fifteen, twenty-minute block each and every day. And so when you do that ongoing, consistent tutoring, we will get better results.
So planning, communication, consistency, key, and completion, right? And then more tutors.
And that's one of the things we've been bouncing around with.
Let's do some tutors.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll try to pull some incentives, get you some tutors.
Can I say something to a big push from Dr. Bree Love is attendance? Teacher attendance, student attendance? I was at a school and I found out that a teacher was paying out of pocket for incentives for kids to come to school, because that was part of their plan. So I don't know, like through PBINs or, you know, some type of funding from like community or something. But they're trying to do something for kids, for them to come to school. Because that's what we are pushing, is attendance.
And as things come up, as principals bring things to us, they will definitely be, I'm sure, coming to you guys as things, you know, that are, that are high needs, for sure.
And I think to sum it up, just, just your support, showing your support, coming to schools, being there, you know, being seen, I think is also just as important as it is for us to be there, it's important for you guys to be there.
Come to walkthroughs with us.
Can I, can I say something?
See the great teaching, see the students learning, it's, it's amazing.
If, if folks on the board have not been, Mr. Reeves, I took Mr. Reeves to educational rounds at Pender High School last year. And that is an eye-opening experience, if you have never done that. I, I mean, it takes half a day. And you kinda see some interesting things?
We have the schedule for October. I will send that out to you guys. If you would like to join us on any of those, let me know, I can let the principal know y'all are coming.
I know I would, it's a lot of fun.
Let's go.
I already got them on my calendar, I'm good.
I have a comment. Dr. Sawyer can tell and I'm getting ready to say something.
Oh, I know it's coming.
Well, it's gonna come out of his mouth now. I believe we did, what we did was right with December testing. I just don't believe that, you know, you got the break and they go back and do exams. I, I believe we did the right thing. We also did the right thing by starting school October tenth, I mean, August tenth. Making a balanced schedule. And it just mind boggles me that somebody will get, or on the internet or wherever, and will complain about more educational instructions. It just mind boggles me that. Fourteen days, and they're complaining about that. Now we have a balanced schedule. You know, you're not, if you have calculus or whatever in school, now you don't, you have the same amount of instructional days in the fall as you do in the spring. And, and I've talked to Matt Perkins, he's a friend of mine. He said it was hard for him to cram that in that short amount of time in the fall versus. But you, it just mind bothers me that you're complaining about more instructional time for your student.
Especially when you're taking like an A.P.
An A.P. class.
That has to be done in.
Yeah.
In like two months.
And I don't know if anybody realizes that, Georgia, they start at school end of, end of July, August first. Japan goes to school six days a week on Saturdays. And we're complaining about fourteen days of this more instructional time for your child to have a balanced schedule? It's just mind boggling to me.
Dr. Bree Love, how many days, school days do we actually go to school now?
Currently, we are at a hundred and sixty-eight, sixty-seven school days. I will, and remember, those are lopsided.
Yes.
Semesters.
Yes.
To get to that number that Mr. Reeves was, was talking about. But the closer you can get to a hundred and eighty would be ideal. That's a ninety, ninety schedule, but.
That was kind of the standard, I'm, I'm, the star member forever, a hundred and eighty days.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing that I think people were just misunderstood about, the teachers have to be here, what, two hundred and fifteen days?
Yes, sir.
We're not putting any more work on them by starting school early, because they have to be here anyway. And then we've spread out these workdays throughout the year, instead of having them all in the beginning and all in the end, where they, where they could, you know, give the kids breaks and, and they can prepare their lessons. It's just, I, I just don't understand.
Last thing I, I will say, Mr. Spivey asked, you know, what, what we need. And I, I just wanna pu, put a plug in for high-quality teachers. And we need to keep our teachers and, and our staff. The most, the, the better, the best systems out there have consistent sta, staff as well. Teachers, school personnel. And we always need to be able to compete and recruit the best that we can, we can get. And so I just wanna, I wanna put that plug out there. And I think we do, have done a great job of being able to cut our attrition rate as a school system of losing teachers and staff. We have a great school system. We take pride in our people. And we will continue to do that. But we always have to also just remember to compete when it comes to living wage and, and those type of things. And just, so I, I just felt compelled to tell you that as, as one of the parts of the formula for success.
You know, I got your back on that one.
Can I say one more thing? Having been a sub at the high school, I can say with pretty good certainty that, and talking with some of my students that come into the classroom, that a lot of them come to school to go to that C.T.E. class. Because they love, they love the class, the rest they don't really want to come for, but they come for, to school because they get to go to that class and they love the classes. So I appreciate that.
And I think those numbers that we saw up there pretty much verify that. I mean, but to wrap it up a little bit, all I will say is that you guys, you work as a team and you presented as a team, and I thank you for that. Because it was good, because I know each of you have a piece of this pie and, and you represent a piece of it. And the fact that all of you came up here today to jointly present, I appreciate you, and I appreciate that. So, board, are there any more questions on this?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are on to ten point four, student transportation update. Dr. Grimm.
Yeah, hello, board, Dr. Bree Love.
Good evening, sir.
Yeah, I know most of you know Mr. Overton, but he deserves an introduction. This, in our short time together, I have discovered that this is a very hardworking person that has lots of perseverance. He's up early in the morning, making sure the buses are taken care of. He's out late at night, taking care of things. And so it's a pleasure working with him, and he's gonna provide you some updates. So, Mr. Overton.
I'll pay you later for, for that, that part. Thank you, Dr. Grimm. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having me tonight. Most of all, I wanna thank the transportation team. We, we, they have worked very hard this summer in getting the, the bell system put together. You know, it was a new project for us, it was some uncharted waters, and a lot of work went into it. There was a lot of, a lot of hours, a lot of overtime for the office staff and for our routing coordinator. She is phenomenal, and I just, just wanna say thank you to all of them. They've, they've, behind the scenes a lot of times and don't get the recognition they deserve. So, so very proud of my team. Give you a few updates before we get to the elephant in the room here. You know, our team practiced, and we practiced, and our bus drivers practiced, and our office staff practiced. And we tried to be as prepared as we could for game day. And anyone that has anything to do with sports knows, game day isn't always what you practice. So with that being said, you know, that, that's kind of where we are. I'll give you a few updates that were kind of from last year, before we get to the three-tier. On our two-way radio project, we're, we're moving along pretty quickly. Mr. Lauren Macon and I felt like that December thirty-first was a good timeline to give them to, to get it completed. We felt like summer being done by August twenty-fifth just wasn't a, a good timeline, realistic. But we're ahead of schedule. So right now, all of our repeaters are installed in the schools. I think the, all, just about all of our bus radios are installed in our buses. I think we have a few, we're still waiting on with some tariff issues, but, but we're, we're really good there. The portable radios for our administration are being programmed as we speak. So we have those that'll be issued out when the time comes. And then our tower installs, we did the lease agreement and everything one, two meetings ago. Mr. Macon told me that the tower equipment and the cabinets are due to be installed tomorrow. We're waiting on some electrical to be installed for that as well, but hopefully that'll be completed by the end of the month. So with that, I don't have a day to say when the radios will be turned on, but we're a lot closer than what we were, and I believe we're gonna be ahead of the December thirty-first timeline. So, so kind of positive there. Our cloud-based video system that we, you guys approved, everything has been installed. The system is up and running. We're building usernames and passwords for all of our administrators in our school currently. We've got a few distributed out, and we actually have some, some new user training scheduled for our principals meeting on Thursday. So that is, that is up and running and in the works. And we'll have some, some A.P. training as well in the future. So for our C.D.L. drivers, right now, the question is always, how many are in the pipeline? We had twelve candidates last year, oh, no. We've had twelve candidates get their C.D.L. since last year, when I did my presentation to you guys the first of school. Back up. We had twelve in the pipeline last year, nine of those twelve have C.D.L. licenses now. We have nine candidates that are waiting to start a class right now. We have six candidates that have taken the class and have struggled a bit with the testing, so they're gonna be in a retesting process to keep moving forward. We have seven candidates currently scheduled for any upcoming classes that we have. So over the next few weeks, they'll be in. The virtual classes are every two weeks, so if you don't get in one, you'll, you'll get in the next one. But we're trying to keep them pretty, moving pretty quickly to get them in. As soon as we get our board reports, we go ahead and get them in the system and get them scheduled for the next class, if, if there's room. And then right now, we have seven candidates that have made it through the classroom, through the, the drug testing and the physical and so on and so forth, and waiting on the D.M.V. trainers to do the road training for them. That is where we catch a little bit of a hiccup in the road. There's, there's some backlog with the D.M.V. trainers, because the virtual class is pretty much limitless, and the D.M.V. trainers only train two at a time for four days, so.
So D.M.V. is the one that does the training?
Yes, the, the road training, the road.
What about the class?
Well, D.M.V. does both, yes. But you've got one instructor in the class, and it's virtual, so it's kind of limitless.
The instructor works for who, D.M.V.?
D.M.V., yes, sir. Yes, sir. Our trainers are, we, we share two trainers with New Hanover in Brunswick County. They work together to train all three counties, kind of as we have them scheduled. So they only train two at a time for four days. So as you can imagine, that process gets a little backed up. But they, they do real good for us. Right now, we currently, last year, we currently, at the week one of school, we were running ninety-four bus routes. Week one this year, we were running ninety-four bus routes. We're down to ninety-three right now, and we've already cut out one of those as a double route. You'll hear about double routes moving on in the future. Miles traveled, last year, the first day of school, we traveled about eighty-six hundred miles. The last day of school, we traveled about seventy-seven hundred miles. Day one this year, we've traveled about eighty-nine hundred miles. And as of this past Friday, we were down to about eighty-seven hundred miles, as far as that goes. With our, with our three-tier system, new to us this year, when I talk about UPSTU, you may hear that word come up a couple of times. Basically, it's just an upload of our student information from Infinite Campus. So last year, from the first day of school to the board presentation that I made on the first Tuesday of September, we had about a thousand forty-eight students that we made updates to in transportation. Since the vote in June for the three-tier bell schedule, we've had almost fifty-five hundred transportation changes. Those are strictly bus changes, not enrollments, disenrollments. This, those are just strictly bus changes. Since open house, we've had almost fourteen hundred and fifty bus changes that, that has had to been done. So when I say thank you to my team, I, I mean it, I mean it. Behind the scenes, they do a great job. And right now, all fourteen hundred and thirty-six of those since open house have a bus pass, and they've been assigned to a bus. So, so good job on them. Let's see. We, we, double routes was a big issue last year. As of August twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-four, we had thirty-eight double routes. Nineteen of them were A.M., nineteen were P.M. Currently this year, and these numbers are Pender County-wide, not just on the east side with three-tier. Currently this year, we have ten A.M. double routes and eleven P.M. double routes. On the east side, five of those are A.M., six of those are P.M., and on the west side, five A.M. and five P.M. on the double route. So we were able to cut some double routes out. And with the unknowns of our three-tier, we're looking to cut out a few more. But with that five thousand number update we had, we're finding that there are a lot that signed up for transportation and they're not riding. So this week started our major updates. We allow the first two weeks of school for things to settle, for parents to decide if they wanna ride the bus or use the transportation. And after week two, we start making any major updates that we can make. So that, that has started now. And we'll be working as quickly as we can to, to kind of get riders off buses that aren't riding, that are just listed on paper, and, and do any route changes we can make. So, last week, Dr. Bree Love and I had a conversation, as we have many. This one was after hours, because that was the only time we could find to, to get on a call. And he asked me one question. He said, is it working? I said, yes, sir. And he said, no, Britton, this is me and you talking, is it working? So. I said, well, there's a lot of information. There's a lot of parents that are, that are interested in the, the late buses and the traffic and the, and the communication. And there's two things that we've really, really stressed on this year. Number one was loss of instructional time. Last year, we were running an hour, hour and a half average at a lot of our topsail schools, or, or in that topsail feeder pattern, on average, throughout most of the year. Hour to an hour and a half of lost instructional time for many students that were on the buses due to lack of drivers. Not so much we saw traffic issues, but really it was, it was a lack of drivers. So currently now, we are at almost no loss of instructional time for that east side. Our buses, I'll give you some updates in a minute, but right now, all of our buses are arriving before the late bell for all of our east side schools. Now, for me, that's not the best. We need to get there a little earlier, we need to allow for breakfast, restrooms, things like that. But we are currently having all of our buses arrive by the late bell for all schools on the east side. So when Dr. Bree Love says, is it working? For that part, yes, it is. You know, loss of instructional time is very important to us. It was, it was a big topic of conversation last year, and for that, I feel like we are winning. So, traffic in Hempstead, everyone knows what traffic is like. Traffic is creating a lot of issues from construction traffic, commuter traffic, school traffic. We've had several accidents in that seventeen kind of area that have, that have kept buses late. Building the three-tier system, you know, it was something that was new to us. You know, and the first day, the comment about communication on the first day. When school dismissed on the first day, you know, we had no idea. You know, school dismissed, we loaded buses, we sent them out. And buses delivered students from high school, came back for elementary school, and came back for middle school. And there was, we practiced and we practiced, but there was no way to know what the first day was gonna be like. So hopefully, communication has gotten better. But again, we're still kind of navigating this three-tier system and, and, and learning, you know, just like everybody else.
Do you think the, and so the opposite of that, the drop-offs? Being, I've heard some comments where they're pretty late in the day and things like that. Do you foresee that getting maybe a little better?
Yes, sir, I do see it getting better.
Because you've got with the break, the breakfast and stuff like that you mentioned also. I mean, that's a pretty wide window.
It is. It is. I anticipate it getting better across the district, just in updating our routes. Like I say, we, we had a lot of people we brought in on paper to ride buses, and we're finding in our numbers that we take in in the morning on, on our, excuse me, on our sign-in sheets, that the ridership numbers on paper just aren't there. So as we start taking kids off buses, so if you don't ride the first two weeks of school, then we, we, we check them off the bus. We check them off the bus, and we keep moving forward. At any point in time, a parent can request a bus and we'll put them back on. But theoretically, if you don't drive the. But theoretically, if you don't drive, ride the first ten days, we take them off. So with doing that, hopefully it's gonna increase or decrease that ride time in the afternoon.
Just remember, and I've said this before, the general public probably doesn't know about the efficiency rating that we get from the state that also affects funding.
Yes, sir.
Me personally, I couldn't care less about it. I mean, the bigger job is get these kids moved. So I mean, I would just say to you, don't be afraid to add a route if you have to, or something like that, to shorten others. That's my, I mean, I don't care. If it costs two thousand dollars in funding, who cares? It's just, it's not worth it, but, and I'm just using that for a round number, you know, but.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You're, you're, and you're exactly right, and I, I appreciate that. We'll definitely.
That part can't be the driver of this, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
So.
Can we make sure that we're using, you know, reasonable and
Right.
kind of a, a good measure as far as how far that we want kids to have to walk to a bus stop? Instead of refusing to come and pick them up in front of their house or maybe five houses down, ten houses down? I had a parent call me and complain and said, look, I understand the bus can't stop at every doorstep. He's like, but the bus driver wants my daughter to walk from the very back of the neighborhood to the main road. And I'm like, I mean, I, and I know that neighborhood. I was like, man, that's a pretty good wall. He's like, yeah, he's like, I'm not trying to be special. He's like, I'll send her down to the next cul-de-sac. He's like, but walking, you know, in the dark, all the way back up the carver road? He's like, yeah, I'm not, I'm not cool with that. And I said, I wouldn't want my twelve-year-old daughter walking there anyway, you know, I, I'm cool with it. So, um, let's just make sure we're using that as good judgment. Um, you know, cause he said he asked the bus driver and just pretty much was like, no, he, she can walk up here. And he was like, fair enough.
Right, right.
And I told him that I wouldn't mention it, so.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would say to that, first of all, um, the, and, and nothing towards you. The bus drivers can't make that call, so, so any parents that are listening, you know, definitely call the Transportation Department because.
I told him to call you. I don't know
Yeah.
if he did or not. This was probably maybe like a week ago.
Right, right.
If I told him I was gonna say something, I, I'm gonna keep my word and I'm gonna bring it up while we're talking about it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So every, every, um, neighborhood is different, you know? Um, we don't have a set distance that, to say that the student don't have to walk. Um, every neighborhood's different. Some neighborhoods are private roads, some have a main entrance we can come in and come out of. Um, generally, we can use the main entrance of most all neighborhoods. Um, a lot of the side roads, what, no matter how long they are, are private and we don't have authority to go in there or authorization to go in there. Um, a lot of neighborhoods do get authorization from their HOAs and will accommodate as we, as we build on those. Um, but and, and then this doesn't even measure efficiency. It's more measuring time. Um, and time does take a, is, is calculated into efficiency, but we also gotta keep time in relation to the distance between bell schedules or the timing between bell schedules. So, um, with the, with the negative traffic impact we have, it is a struggle to keep that time between bell schedules. We did see a little bit of traffic issues last year on a two-tier schedule. Um, it was difficult to measure with the amount of driver shortage we had because we had a lot of double routes that were established last year. And on top of that, we had a lot of non-established double routes as well. So I, I do hear what you're saying. We'll keep that in consideration. Um, it's finding that balance between how far do we go versus keeping our buses arriving.
Yep. And, and that's exactly what I told the gentleman. I just told him, I said, yeah, I see what your point is that far. I said, we'll figure it out.
Right, right, exactly. So bus arrival from day one to, uh, I think I measured it up to yesterday morning. Um, in our, in our morning sign-in sheet. So Topsail High School, our first arrival on August twenty-fifth was seven forty-three in the morning with a bell time of seven-ten. We've narrowed that down to seven-oh-three with our last bus on average, okay? That's the easy part because that's the first bell schedule. Um, elementary, their first bus was eight forty on the first day with a bell time of seven fifty-five. And now we have elementary down to about seven forty-five. So there's been a few traffic issues, accidents, so on and so forth that have, that have been close to that late bell. But on average, we're getting it down to about seven forty-five. So that's about ten minutes prior to the late bell. Um, with that said, we still have middle school as a third tier. So day one, we were at nine forty-two AM on that tier, and right now we're still teetering around that eight forty late bell time with our buses. You know, we have some that are, that are coming a minute ahead, a minute behind the late bell time, but we've narrowed that window right on down. Hopefully we can narrow it down more as we start consolidating routes and updating student ridership, you know, making changes to our, to our routes. But that's where we are from day one to day ten. So, so good improvements on that. Um, we would like to make that a little bit better. Uh, keep the, the loss of instructional time where it is or even better, and then at that point, we concentrate on our afternoon routes. Um, if we can get our afternoon routes within a, within a good time window, you know, our goal was to get every bus back by the time the, the dismissal bell rings. Um, I do have some numbers on that as well. So our dismissal times, we were, uh, this is getting buses off the lot by, after the dismissal bell rings. So for our high school buses, the first day of school, it took us thirty-one minutes to get all the buses loaded and get them off the, off the lot, which is a lot. When you, that's a long time when you have every bus sitting there waiting. Um, twenty-four buses on the high school side, not counting EC buses. So we're now down to about an eleven-minute turnaround on getting students loaded and getting them off campus from the time that tardy bell, or that dismissal bell rings. Um, elementary, we were about an hour and twenty-one minutes the first day of school getting students off campus. So, yeah, you know, a lot of challenges. Um, we're down now to about a fifty-minute return on the last bus to get our elementary students off campus, you know? Um, still, still not acceptable, but you know, we're, we're gonna continue to work on it. And then middle school being our last tier, actually, we were at about a hundred and fourteen, at an hour and fourteen minutes the first day of school getting the last bus off campus, and now we're down to about twenty-two minutes. So you say, why is it so much difference between elementary and high? Well, if you think about high school being the largest per, you know, area of the Topsail side. So as we put high school first in the morning, it's the largest area to cover. So when our buses come in, they're able to go back out shorter distances and get back in and hopefully keep that forty-five minute window. But we mirror the same thing in the afternoon. So our aft, our high school buses, they run out first. They cover that large lay of the land, and then we come back in with our elementary and our middle. Um, our elementary schools being second, we do have our South Topsail and North Topsail schools kinda separated a little bit. They are running some other routes for other schools, but that's kinda, uh, making for longer times with that amount of elementary buses. So, um, and our middle school being about twenty-two minutes, they're covering basically two zones on that Topsail side. And, um, you know, that twenty-two minute time is, is not bad when you take into consideration, we're at eleven or twelve minutes on high school. So, um, so, so we're hoping to do better, hoping to get better with any changes. And, um, and then basically right now, you know, as, as I said, traffic is, is a big issue. I don't know how we fix that. Um, just, we need to bypass, come on with it. But, uh, bypass. Um, we did, we did find in some of my, some of my research that with our elementary students, they're a little slower getting on the bus. Some of that is from buses pulling into the school to the time that bus leaves. They're a little bit longer, you know, we got more elementary students on buses than we have middle or high school, so it's gonna take a little bit longer. And sometimes it, it just, they're, they're slower, shorter legs, you know, getting up those steps. And there's, there's more of them, you know, backpack is as big as they are, so, uh, that is taking a little bit longer. Um, you know, getting our route as more efficient as we can, um, just get them updated as quickly as possible starting this week. Those are just some notes we're trying to do, consolidating routes as we can. And then like I say, we've already, within the first ten days, we were able to, to delete one of our double runs. Um, it did cause some timing and some communication issues, but I think we've got that straightened out today. We sent some communication to those families. And, um, so those are just some notes that we're looking forward to working on, you know, over the next three months. So that's about it. Any questions?
Has K given you any idea when they'll be done? Well, not really the bypass, but the, I guess that's where it connects.
No, I don't. Um, what I, what I know is in the last, I think DOT kinda session we were at, um, they're looking at the first section to two-ten to be, to be completed sometime in twenty-twenty-seven. Um, kinda right along the same time we're gonna open the K eight school, so we'll, we'll be challenged with that, and then I believe the, the full completion is sometime in twenty-thirty. So I'm ready for it to get here. So I'll take twenty-twenty-eight for sure.
I went in their office.
Yeah, okay, okay.
They're a little ahead of schedule on that first part. I went in that office the other day.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're four or five months ahead.
Yeah, and I will say on the DOT, um, we did have DOT out there. Uh, I spent about the first eight days of school on that side of the county. Um, some days I stayed all day, just worked in my truck, ate lunch in my truck, and you know, used libraries, used conference rooms over there to, to work when I could. Um, and we had DOT out there with us a lot of days in the road. On the very first day of school, he made some traffic changes to the Vista entrance on Topsail Middle School. And then a few days in, he made some changes over on the Jenkins side for high school coming in and those elementary parents coming in. So DOT's been out and they have helped and they've communicated with us, and a few seconds on a stoplight is a lot. Um, we've looked at the double lanes coming in from the southbound or from the northbound traffic, excuse me, turning into Jenkins. Um, we've looked at the shortness of the turn lane coming south, turning into the middle school. That's kind of a construction barrier there. Those lanes are gonna get extended in the future, but we're, we're dealing with the construction on that side.
Right.
So still having some communication conversations with administration over there about trying to get the, the car lines down and get it off of seventeen as best we can. So that's still a work in progress there. Um, but, but I will say DOT's been very helpful and I feel like they, they've done as much as they could. And in our first meeting, um, he was very open into letting us know that Highway seventeen traffic had priority over the lights. Um, but they did come in, they did make some changes, and like I say, it, it has helped when we start counting cars that are coming in.
Um, Mister Overton, back in twenty, I think it was twenty-nineteen, DOT came out and did a traffic study. They performed a traffic study for us, and I think it was for how we could reroute our, um, our drop-off and pickup traffic once people got onto the campus over at Topsail Annandale, uh, Topsail High and Topsail Middle. And I was just wondering, have they indicated at all that they would come back and do anything like that? Because they had, they put up a tethered drone and left it up there, I think for, uh, off and on for like two days. And we got back a, you know, it was a pretty comprehensive report on, and I know that helped the principals a lot. By any chance, have they talked about coming back and doing another comprehensive traffic study for us?
So when I, when I first got here, I reached out to DOT about that, the traffic study. Um, not knowing the history, you know, of the traffic here. Um, and, and, and I'll try to dig up that email communication, but it, it ended with something to the fact of the study was done in nineteen and twenty, and they would, they would, they really weren't looking to do another study until the bypass was completed. Now, not trying to speak for DOT, but that was just general conversation that I had when it came to doing a traffic study right now. I feel like that with the, with the bypass being built and, and with it moving forward, you know, what a study will tell us right now is that there's a lot of traffic. And the, the bypass, I think, will give us more beneficial information down the road once the bypass is finished.
Gotcha. I just knew that one time they had done it and I didn't know that, um, since we'd implemented three-tier, if they'd be a little bit more accommodating as to coming on out, but I guess since.
I'll be glad to reach out and ask.
You've got what you got.
Right. Doesn't hurt to ask. So I'll be glad to, to reach out and ask and see, see. Uh, I do know one thing we talked about is it is, it takes a lot of planning and a lot of manpower to do the studies. And it is, it is time-consuming, so I'll be glad to ask. I mean, like I say, it won't hurt.
I leave that to your discretion. I mean, you know more about it than I do. I just thought I would ask since
Right.
that, that one study really did help.
Sure.
When would you know, uh, I can't remember, the last, about what time does the last latest bus you've had come in?
We've had some buses come in as close as, as, well, the, the, I'm gonna say the last student. We've had some, some students being dropped off in that five-thirty, five-forty-five range. Now, that was the first week of school.
All right. But do you, can you let us know at the next meeting if it's improved a lot or?
Sure. I can pull the same information that I, that I've given to you tonight and just see where we are from today to, um, our, our October board meeting. Sure.
I just, uh, I've had people ask me about that as well and, um, as long as it's moving in the right direction, which it probably will be, that's.
Yeah. Within, within a month, we will have made, um, some, some pretty significant route changes as far as ridership and looking at, at how our buses are structured and, and, and taking into consideration what you said tonight about, um, you know, our object a lot of times is trying to cut out buses, you know, how many students we transport with how few buses is our funding source, but I definitely heard what you said, so we'll, we'll definitely.
You've got a different situation here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So with, it sounds like with your blessing, we can run as many buses as we need to make this work.
I just, I hate to don't sound like wasting money, but I mean, we've got, we've got a different situation here, and I mean.
Right.
And I have a friend who commutes all the way from Sneed's Ferry to Carolina Beach Road down in Wilmington. And, um, I was on the phone with her the first day.
Right.
Uh, it took her a while to get to work, I think a little over two hours. Uh, but by Friday, she was getting to work on time, if not a little bit early. So I thank you and I do commend you guys for all the work that you put into that. It did show, and people were seeing improvement.
Yeah. And, and I'm sure there's a window there where, where school is, is impacting traffic, you know? There is a lot of cars that are coming in and out of that, that Topsail area. Um, the, the buses are, you know, the buses are on the highway, but they're, they're scattered about, you know? The, with the Topsail High buses are coming in now, kinda grouped up, you know, because they are the first tier coming in. But as they leave and come back, they're kinda staggered in and out. So the bus is having a big kinda group impact on traffic. I don't think it's very high. Um, but I will say, you know, I've been out in some late hours and after hours and, and, uh, the first Friday of school, I came from Surf City up to the two-ten Highway seventeen intersection. And from the time I hit seventeen at, at the Surf City School area to get to that two-ten, it was about a forty-minute ride. And that was from four-fifty in the afternoon to five-thirty. So keep in mind, there was a few buses still on the road, no student traffic, no parent traffic, most of the staff is gone. So, you know, the traffic is, um, we're, 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 we're putting some into the traffic during those peak hours, but it's only for a short window of time. It, the traffic's there and it's commuters and it's the public, the general public, so.
Well, and I think as our, um, one of our earlier speakers, um, um, Ms. Mysut was up here, um, saying, listen, can, can people be a little bit more mindful of when you get out on the road? I a hundred percent agree with that.
And you know, another thing that she said that makes sense too, cause I live down Slue Point Road. If you, if you're coming south of just say Jacksonville, if you would just turn left at the Hilltop Grocery, go down and then make another right and get on Slue Point Loop and then come out like she said, she's shaking her head yes. And you come out on Country Club at that stoplight, yeah, you might be past the golf course, but it don't take ten minutes to come through there, cause I do it, I do it every day. But I went, the first time I went around and went down seventeen in front of Topsail Annandale and Topsail Middle, it was about thirty-five, forty minutes. But the other way, I, I did it out, what, about ten minutes? Yes, she's shaking her head yes. If more people would think about that too. Just use that route, cause you, you, if you're not dropping a child off at school, if you're going to Wilmington to work, use that route and, and go out that way. You, you, you're missing everything.
Right, right. We do have, uh, we've changed some bus entrances, um, and, and I believe, I feel like we're still kinda observing this. Um, whether the buses come in Vista, come in Jenkins, or they exit Jenkins, exit Vista. Um, with the parent traffic coming in and trying to get as much as we can off of seventeen. I will say, we've changed it a couple of times and it's, and it's, I'm sure it's been frustrating to the parents, it's been frustrating to the public, uh, frustrating to our bus drivers. Um, they're, they're calling and texting me wanting to know where to go and, and we're doing a lot of changing on the fly. Um, but, but traffic, you know, traffic in Hempstead, it, it would be helpful to be mindful of kinda, everybody's kinda in the same direction. We're all trying to get to work, we're all trying to get here and there. And you know, we see oftentimes that people will, they'll cut that stoplight at Vista and make a U-turn so they can come back across to get to Topsail Middle School. And all that does is make that light cycle one more time, and it holds up those turning lanes in the north and southbound traffic. So anytime those types of things are done by one person, it cycles those lights and it just, it just holds up traffic even more. So I agree, being mindful of just our neighbors out on the highway, it would, it would ease kinda the flow a little bit and, and just letting those lights cycle and getting through them and not blocking intersections cause you're trying not to wait on the next cycle. So, you know, just
Hold back on that Starbucks run until a little bit later, yeah.
Exactly. Anything else?
Thanks for the hard work.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone, we are at agenda item number eleven, um, consent agenda. Uh, Board, is there anything that any of you would like to pull off, uh, of the consent agenda for discussion?
I'd like to ask some questions about the change orders on eleven five.
Eleven point five J H Lee change order log.
Just very general questions, nothing.
Okay, I believe that is Dr. Graham.
I could probably answer.
Or Mr. Taylor.
I was wondering what the.
Sure, come on up.
Uh, change order log.
Yes.
I think there were five.
Well.
Correct.
Well, more like the specific ones like the turf stone pavers to L D asphalt, is that a?
To credit back to us, sir. Uh, we were trying to, uh, make sure that we didn't, um, have excessive impervious covering to the area, obviously being as low and wet as it is. We wanted to eliminate that. But in an opportunity to have that conversation, we realized a low density pavement did not create the, um, impervious covering that we thought it might.
What about the washer dryer? What what is that for?
Uh, it's probably for the athletic, uh, washer and dryer upgrades.
Probably not included in the original.
We had some upgraded washer and dryer because of the athletic uniforms. Um, currently, many of our middle schools, well, at least in the past at Topsail High, for example, Topsail Middle, have used residential. And obviously washing football uniforms, especially for a school this size, those residential, um, devices would not withstand the, uh, pressure.
All right. What are cable trays in corridors?
Uh, cable trays, uh, are where all of our, um, and Mr. Makin can speak more clearly to this probably. But the cable trays, instead of running the the, uh, wires together.
Bound bonded.
We lay everything in the cable tray. So if we need to replace any or install new, instead of running it across these, like if you pulled up some of these, you would probably see cables running across them. The cable trays allow us to expand capacity for the internet connectivity and things of that nature.
What about the card readers? Is that a guard or something that goes around them? Says hollow metal frame rework at card reader location.
So that's the doors themselves that allow the pass for our card reader, uh, cabling to, without having to make modifications to the door themselves.
So they'll be ready to go when they're installed?
Yes, sir. They come prefabricated, ready for that.
Do you know what cable trays are? Sorry.
Yeah, it was twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you want to hear?
I thought it's a question.
The wire.
No, that's all, that's all. Sometimes change orders get expensive.
Yes, sir.
I just wonder what they were for. Good enough.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor.
Do we have like, uh, a certain in- information on what kind of stack washer and dryer we're going with? We're going like something from Lowe's or are we going with like?
No, it should be a commercial grade. Uh, the last one we ordered for Heidi Trask was actually out of Charlotte. Which was odd, you had to go that far. I mean, you got Raleigh and you got Wilmington, but we had to, uh, order it from, um, Charlotte area.
That's probably something else that we need to, we talked about before most of y'all were here, there was some discussion on washers and dryers and then COVID kind of.
Yeah.
Got in the way and stuff happened. But, uh, can we do that next month maybe? Um, does somebody find out what schools have got what for, like, of course, the high schools have usually got them.
Yes, sir.
Need to make sure they work though, that's the other thing.
Yes, sir.
Open your eyes, a commercial grade and then it's like a home dryer.
For the trash.
But it was middle schools and.
Well, not tennis, but other thing.
Athletics. And I mean, in elementary schools, you may have other reasons to have one, but.
Yes, sir. We have our pre-K, um, service areas as well as some of our exceptional children's classrooms that have the residential, obviously, for student clothing.
I mean, if somebody makes a mistake and there's not one, I I would, when I say find out who's got what.
Yes, sir.
I mean, like, send the principal of a school an email, every school.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a washer? Do you have a dryer?
Doesn't work.
If so, where is it at? What do you use it for? Where does it work? Period. Because that's something that we probably need to.
Would we only need that for the, um, middle schools and the high schools though? I mean, we wouldn't need that for.
Well, unless elementary schools have a need for one, like if, you know, something gets, yeah, or.
Yeah, mostly in our pre-K classrooms and some of our exceptional children's classrooms.
And I mean, if you're talking about a household one with.
Household one.
If you have a, something minor, I mean, it's a lot of difference in an elementary school where it might not be used, but twice a month for a quarter of a load of clothes as opposed to athletic uniforms that.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Um, I just want, just, it'd be nice to get everybody evened up.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I think we talked about this before and Beth remembers, but the rest of y'all were not here at that time, so it's been that long. And, um, it'd just be nice to get that straight.
Yes, sir.
If we can find a way to fund it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Um, uh, Board, were there any other consent agenda items? Or, uh, would we like to, um, entertain a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Okay, very good. And we have a second. All in favor, please say aye. And the motion is passed. Thank you very much. We are moving from consent agenda now to the action agenda. Twelve point one, Pender County Schools, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Ms. Nowland.
Good afternoon, Board, again. Um, so I bring to you our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Um, I know this is intense, um, night reading, if y'all want to take this home and read it. Um, so I will go over our total budget. I do want to just say, first of all, that our federal budget is not included in this. I'll be bringing it back later, um, kind of like what they are behind on the federal side. Same thing has just trickled down into the allotments and the process for our federal budgets to be approved. So our largest federal budgets have not come in yet. We are working on that. They'll be sent in within the, um, next week and then they have an approval process. So I'll bring that back to you separate. Our total budget without federal money is a hundred and thirty-one million, four oh two, eight fifty-two, fifty-three. Um, and this is our, um, uh, budget resolution, which just breaks down things by state, local, federal. Um, that's just kind of a summary page. But, um, just some takeaways. Um, I want to speak to first child nutrition because in the, it, within the audit presentation, there were questions asked about the cash, that cash flow and the cash that we, um, used this year. Um, Mr. Hall, I will tell you that we are on that, looking and monitoring that, uh, with the help of Airmark and with Kelly Ramos, who's in, um, our child nutrition department. Our goal is to balance those, um, balanced participation and the increase in the, uh, participation within the program to support that, continuously support that program. We did spend a lot of money this year on purpose in our plans. When we looked at equipment and the needs across the district, we replaced four serving lines, which was about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which that was exactly the amount of our spend down, um, in our plan. We increased salaries and we increased the amount, the kind of the food quality.
Well, that's what, that's what I was asking about earlier, if we could sustain. We don't have to buy a serving line every year, but I mean.
That's completely understandable. That's why we will stay on top of, we're trying to balance out getting the program where it needs to be and catching up and and then growing the program. I think I I feel like we're in a really great place with child nutrition at this point. Um, Airmark has got good, stable staff in our, um, schools. First two weeks have been great. Our goal is to be the model county and state when it comes to child nutrition. Uh, we had a huge, um, summer feeding program and we intend to grow that and continue that. But we will keep our eye on the prize and the eye on, eye on the dollars.
As prices of of stuff continue to go up, I mean.
We will.
Increase.
We will continue to adjust.
I mean, we'll have, we'll have to do another increase one day.
Yes, we will.
I mean, there's no nice way to put it.
And, you know.
To maintain the same.
Quality, right.
Quality and I think it was what, about thirty?
Thirty-five cents.
Thirty-five cents per.
And that made a huge difference. And in our contract, as we renegotiated our continued contract for this upcoming year, they're tweaking that thirty-five cents and noticing that we don't really have to spend that to get, we we've kind of tested the areas that the quality, what we've received good.
Who's tweaking it? Airmark?
Airmark and us. We 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 will continue to add extra dollars. We're not taking anything away from the kids. We're just making sure we don't spend thirty-five extra cents on something they don't want, right?
Right. Yeah, just don't.
We're not taking away.
Repeat of the past.
We will not. I I assure you, we're on it. Um, so you have my commitment to that.
But just remember though, but this goes for Airmark as well. If we don't know about it or that thirty or thirty-five cents could solve a lot. You know, if we don't know it, we don't know it. So don't be afraid to tell us, is what I'm saying.
I I won't. Um, I I'm accused of a lot of things, but being afraid to tell people things is not one of them. You can ask my husband. Um, we'll we'll stay on top of it. I just wanted to assure you of that.
All right.
I I think our program's going to get bigger and better. Um, I can tell you that as we talked about fund balance in the, in the audit, um, I have been sounding alarms for this past year. Um, for this upcoming year, we have no state budget, uh, which is really hurting us. We would be in a totally different place if we didn't have the flexibility and the fund balance to weather that storm. Um, it seems like we may even be going into a a whole new year without a state budget from last I heard. Um, I don't know if the attorney has heard anything different. Um, I think they've made some, some, some positive movement in just saying this is what we're going to put forward and then nobody said anything. So there's really been no votes. Um, so with that being said, with the state budget that we have, we took some substantial hits. Low wealth was about two million dollars hit. Hopefully, we're still hoping that they come to, back to the table and get a budget and will give us some additional funding. We're also hopeful that our A D M will grow up and that that funding will be given to us. Um, but we are being conservative and we are being very instrumental in meeting and planning. Um, Mr. Spavy, you asked earlier, what do you need, um, to to continue our progress? I I take a lot of pride in the process of our budgeting, that we start with a beginning of the year meeting, a middle of the year meeting and an end of the school year meeting. And all cabinet is readily available to all principals to discuss flexibility on budgets. So we're not just setting a budget and walking away. We are maintaining that budget, we're maintaining communications, we're using the money that we have wisely. Um, and we're reacting. We're looking at scores. We're not sitting on our laurels and just expecting, okay, we're going to spend five hundred thousand dollars on this and not checking the temperature to see what it's doing. So those days are gone. We are doing zero-based budgeting pretty much all year long. So please know that when we bring a budget to you that we have talked to all of our partners.
Can you, can you explain to the public when we say we took a two million dollar hit on low wealth, can you explain what that means?
So in our state funding, um, if you look at our state budget and you look at, um, if you pull it up, and low wealth funding is P R C O thirty-one, which is low wealth. And you can see in comparison, so we got four point, let me play this up. Six million last year. We got two point nine million this year.
Yeah, what was the reason for the cut?
Can you explain?
Part of the reasoning is a formula, but the biggest reason in, the biggest reason right now is we have no state budget. So they can't, they are working on a continuing budget. So when you work on a continuing budget, you cannot give, exceed any dollar threshold of what you divvied out among all of your people last year without some action. And so the benefits, the, uh, retirement, the hospitalization, all of those numbers that are built into our allotments, we have not gotten any of those yet. So we will not receive those increases. We won't receive state, um, even like they bumped the scales for teachers so they only got an increase for their years. They didn't increase our money for that. So all of those dollars are being withheld and what the state calls that is a base budget. So basically, they've withheld probably twenty to thirty percent in some cases of our total state budget, which is the livelihood of most districts, right?
Does that, keep hearing about districts, uh, in this state and other states too, but lots and lots of layoffs and things going on for different, I mean, including teachers. This is not just support staff, it's teachers too. And like in our state, is that because of the budget or is that, that's probably federal, probably both.
It's a combination. I mean, it is, it's like when we talk about, we have some fund balance to weather these things and these increases in retirement rates on even local, federal and state employees. Some of these small districts are dollar for dollar. I mean, they're just barely keeping the lights on. So, um, it could be that, it could be that they didn't plan well with the cliff from the S R funding. Like they had too much money in positions and didn't pull back from that. Um, so it's all across the board in our.
Well, that's the ones I've read about. There's no telling how many they've cut that just were never simply filled. You know, so they didn't tell anybody. They just cut it out of their budget and fired nobody.
And I have to say that, you know, we have continued, uh, progress moving forward with our county. Um, a lot of counties say, hey, you have fund balance, you need to spend all of that or you need to have no fund balance and we will bail you out when it comes time. So a lot of counties are struggling at the same pace as the districts. So, I mean, I think we are in a perfect, I don't want to say a perfect storm right now. We're in a good place because we have prepared for this. I don't want to say that we will weather it without any upheaval or upsets, but again, my and the the cabinet's focus is to make sure that through any budget crises that we have, that the instructional area is the last to be touched. Um, so our zero-based budgeting is making the difference.
It just seems from what I've read from other places that, you know, even teachers that we have a shortage of here at times, that's not always the case in other places and.
It is, um.
You know, probably why we don't have as many openings now as we've had for years.
So, so I want, I want to speak to a couple of things. Uh, first, state budget, uh, situation. I, you will hear different stories depending on which house you talk to. Uh, the House is saying that the Senate is delaying the continuous budget process. Senate's going to say the same thing. Um, the, as far as the hope for an actual comprehensive budget, that ship has sailed for this year. Uh, both houses and leaderships have come out and said they're going to get continuing mini budgets until next year, uh, when they'll start the process all over again. The situation in lots of ways gets even a little bit bleaker because the General Assembly is only slated to come back to town uh, four more times, uh, this year. And these are for single day sessions. So unless they start changing their minds based on the adjournment resolution, um, the hope of having anything that looks remotely like a state budget for this fiscal year is slim to none. In regards to, uh, employment and payment issues and layoffs, I will tell you that. In regards to employment and payment issues and layoffs, I will tell you that no district, regardless of size, is immune if you do not plan fiscally responsible. There are particular districts in the central part of the state right now that are impacted in various severe ways for failures to plan and adequately make provisions, using federal money to pay for positions that was set to sunset.
Some of these are teach, like, straight teacher positions in some cases, right?
Absolutely, yeah. These are teaching positions. These are TAs. These are people who have licenses. And I will tell you what my clients in the areas where these people are, they're looking, this is a hiring opportunity. They're going to these folks who are laid off and like, hey, you know what? You may not like the situation you are in, but we'll treat you better. And so I think there's an element of that. I think we saw that about a year ago in this region, where you guys were able to capitalize on some folks who were let go. I also think there's a genuine lack of experience in the financial officer and finance department seats. And so the planning that Ms. Nalan and her team do for this district is exceptional, and I say that from a seat of experience. And I will say that the ability to not think about just tomorrow, but to think about six, eight, twelve months from now, eighteen months from now, when a, you know, forecast is incredibly uncertain, it is truly a feat to keep doing.
So not all of these finance people have ever seen a bad time.
Yeah, that's right. They've never seen a bad time.
She has.
Or they're brand new to the seat. They're former CPAs who've been used to doing, you know, taxes or finance balance sheet work. They've never, you know, sort of been in these waters. And, you know, I'm not going to speak for Ms. Nalan, but, you know, having spent most of her career in this field, I mean, this is unlike just about any other area of governmental accounting. It's sort of an odd creature. So anyway.
That is correct. But we have a good balance here. We're working through a good balance. I am being cautiously optimistic. I am pulling back. I'm reminding, because a lot of our team has not seen bad times here, right?
But well, that's what I, yeah, let me clarify. You did not see that here.
Correct.
But you have seen it before.
Yes. And I, you know, there are some things that, you know, I may be a little bit more cautious and restrained on. But I pride myself in always making sure that instruction comes first, because that's what our kids are owed, is the absolute best. But we are balancing that. We're working through that. I just want you all to know that even though it looks really, we look comfortable, right? So we still don't want to take our foot off the gas and let go. We want to make sure that the money that we're spending is going in the right direction and the right places. We need to pull up when we need to and we need to change direction when we need to. And that's what this budget represents, is just that. We put one point eight million dollars of fund balance in the local budget this year. And we spent that money on things that were important and that covered low wealth schools, that added some teachers that most people are not adding now. Like I said, they're taking away. So we're going to continue to invest our money, but we're just going to be very smart about it.
All right.
Thanks again.
You need, this needs to be, this is a voting item, right?
Yes.
I did have a question. Page four. Thirty-eight at the top, under non-instructional support, parking attendants for Topsail High School. What is that?
So Topsail High School is the only, is this only school that has an attendant that helps manage traffic at that school. So that is basically just a pass-through item, because Topsail then pays us that money back for that attendant. So the only reason it even comes through Pender County Schools books is because it is a payroll function and they have to pay payroll taxes. So then we take their time sheet, we process the payment for that, and then they pay us back for them.
And if memory serves correctly, that parking lot attendant is paid for by parking fees from the students.
That's correct, yes.
And we also, Topsail High has, I would dare say probably one of, no, the largest population of student parking in all of Pender County. So that parking lot attendant has helped substantially. He's worth it.
Yes.
No, especially when you don't see it like at Heidi Trask, I can understand that, especially when you don't see it at Heidi Trask or at Pender High. But considering the, just the amount of students that we have who drive to school over at Topsail, it's, yeah, it was necessary.
Okay, any other questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And we have been at this for two and a half hours, so I'm going to give everybody a five-minute recess and we'll be back in five. Thank you.
Thank you. Our recess is now over and we are back to our action agenda 12.2 J H Lee Project Manager Contract. Mr. McFarson?
All right. Good evening, Board. As you are aware, the Board selected to enter into a contract with M B P for project management services for the J H Lee School. We have concluded contract negotiations. The total cost of the contract is $470,000 and these are for project management services that will go the length of the project. Any questions about scope? Because I always find that is to be an interesting place. That is on page nine, beginning on page nine of the agreement, the scope of services and compensation. It's Exhibit A. But unless there are questions, I would recommend approval.
And so without a project manager, who would be in charge?
Without a project manager, Mr. Grimm and Dr. Breedlove would be in charge.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. It is now approved. 12.3 graduation dates 2025, 2026. Dr. Sawyer?
Hey. So graduation dates for 25, 26 have been reviewed with directors, principals, students, and the community for feedback. The current proposed dates, the recommendation from the principals would be under the current TRASC would be on May 28th at 9:00. PECs to be determined based on the Wilson Center and CFCC. Pender High, May 29th at 9:00. Pila, the 29th at 1:00 and Topsail High, the 28th at 6:30.
Who came up with the, what, the input that, where did you get this data from or these times?
So the principals meet with their communities and then that's where those come, the recommended times came. They did meet and came up with a proposal for evenings. So the second proposal would be the evening times.
Did those proposals come, sorry, did that input come from like PAC teams or do we know?
Let me, Dr. Lee, do you have some input?
No, I'm not sure.
I'll make a motion that we table this till next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It was aye.
All opposed?
No.
Aye. No.
Okay, I'm going to break the tie here and I'm going to say we're going to go ahead and discuss this. I would like to at least try to get some kind of clarity on which way we're going to go. And I think that deserves a little bit of discussion.
We do need to get the dates out to the community.
So let's start with, we have people in Topsail that are demanding that we use TRASC Coliseum. So the issue with that is, I don't know that Pender County Schools can pay for that when there's other schools that it's not paid for with. So there's been questions about fundraising and with fundraising privately, you know, we don't know whether this thing can be booked or whether it can be raised, whether it could be not. That was the purpose of tabling this until there was more information on that. But it's, and I, the other thing is, I just don't believe that parents or anybody else wants to have a graduation at nine o'clock in the morning during a weekday. I just, I think somebody's lying somewhere. I mean, graduations have always traditionally been at night and that's the reason that we did this. I think that staff came up with it to maximize days off and what's convenient for them. But we work for the taxpayers. We work for the parents. So that was the purpose that I brought this graduation stuff up for to start with. If you've got different proposals, I mean, why are we hearing two proposals?
That's, that's what they, they came up with, an evening proposal and they came up with the current.
Well, I mean, which do they want? Which, which do the parents want? Do they want an evening or do they want it in the daytime?
I haven't spoken with the parents. I've spoken with the principals and the principals were recommending the current proposed dates. But I can go back to the parents. I mean.
All right. Well, I'm confused on, I will not be voting today on it, so.
Okay, and the reason that I voted the way that I did to break the tie was because I wanted more discussion. Not so much if we don't take the vote, it is what it is, but I believe that at least the subject warranted a little bit more discussion. Okay?
We don't really have enough information to discuss, is my problem, but.
Well, but the people who are listening just got a little bit of information because we did just go.
That's true.
We did continue on with the conversation at least.
I talked with the principal at Pender High School and he said, yes, they preferred, they preferred the AM graduation but would make the evening work if that's the way the board voted, but.
Who is they though?
I guess the staff and whoever that he talks to, it might be the school improvement team. I don't know.
Exactly.
You're not going to make every parent happy.
No, no.
Just like I'm not going to make every child happy in the school, so.
They don't care. They can do what they want to. I just can't imagine some of the times that have been happening in the past. You know, we used to have graduation at 5:00 PM, then again at 7:00 PM, and then on Saturday morning. Everybody wants to go back to the way we used to do things. That's how it was before COVID. But whatever, I'll go along with whatever. I mean, I don't care. I'm not a, I don't have a dog in that fight really.
I'm used to having a mixture of days and nights before I came here. So, I mean, it doesn't, it, it's not going to matter to the principals, whichever y'all choose. It's more about making sure that we can get this out to families and students so they can start planning.
Well, graduation is a long time from today, so.
It is.
No, but the planning starts pretty far in advance, just.
Oh, yeah, everybody's got to buy plane tickets and reservations and all this.
You have to recognize that not everybody's from Pender County.
It's a lot. It is.
I was on a flight after the, I went to the Topsail High graduation, what, on Friday night and then when they moved it to Saturday? And then I was on a flight that Sunday and the folks sitting next to me had been here from Mississippi for Topsail High School graduation.
That's true.
The earlier you can plan those things, usually the more cost effective you can get tickets and things like that.
I mean, at this point, I don't care if, you know what, let the schools do what they want to. But I don't hear any complaints sent to my email about a time that people don't agree with because I tried, so.
Well, and I would like to have a little bit more information about how the principals do come about their decision.
Sure, we can get that to you.
And I'll have to be honest with you, I am glad that with either the current proposed dates or the new proposed dates, we have broken those graduations. We've broken it down to two days because I, I will just say for myself, one day of graduation is, that's a lot.
Well, on the, on the new proposed, it's actually four days. On the next, the evening, all evening ones, those are, that would take a total of four days.
Okay.
I just hate to set something in stone and then we realize, or people, people involved realize, even staff, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to knock the staff here. I just, I've got to make sure that we're not just here, well, this is what we want, period. And they don't have a good reason other than because we're ready to get off for vacation. That's what I don't want. But, you know, if a month from now someone comes up, you know, somebody thinks of something or pops up, this is why we can't do it this way, or we really do have these, these people would like to have it in the daytime. Or, I mean, I'm certainly not opposed to doing what they want. I just.
I do want to.
She's right about it being crowded when you have four in one day.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I do want to say that there is, if you look at the dates down at the bottom, between the last day of school, teachers having out for Memorial Day and then coming back after Memorial Day. If we wait too much longer than the dates that are proposed here, you've got kids that are graduating a week and a half to two weeks after. So the longer that we extend it out really does.
That is a valid reason. A vacation a year from now is not.
No, I don't even.
Pender County Schools doesn't care about vacations. We shouldn't. That's not our job.
Yeah. So that's why I wrote down there between the 25th and the 2nd, right? The 25th is that Labor Day. We come back on the 26th and then making sure that everything is ready to go. If we continue on with our current proposal, everything would be ready by that Wednesday, the 28th, and we'd follow through that week like we normally do. If not, we would have to continue, everything would still have to be ready by the 28th, but we'd have four days of consecutive. So it's either, either or.
See, that's, that's why I voted no, because I've already talked to Mr. Taylor about this. That's, that was the whole thing and it, that's exactly right. If we don't do it in the morning like we're talking about, then we've got four days. I talked to him like for, I don't know, 30 minutes about this. That's the reason I voted no.
When, when is the last day of class, I'm, I'm sorry, I guess the last exam, which, you know, the students don't come back after.
The day before we leave for the 20, I think it's the 22nd, 21st or 22nd.
Okay, that includes makeup exams and everything?
21st is the last day of school.
So 21st and then now you're talking, I mean.
And then they're off.
Week after.
Yes. So you're already a week after. Yeah.
Well, then let's vote then. If y'all like it, let's vote.
Well, I've got a few questions before we do. Mr. McFarson? Okay, so I think the board received, if I'm not mistaken, I saw, what, six or seven emails from moms who are wanting to take the graduation back, excuse me, the Topsail High graduation back to UNCW.
How about seven?
And I had seven. I saw seven.
I didn't count. I just had a lot.
Okay. I counted mine and there were seven.
I had seven.
But there were several suggestions and I think that they were trying, they were trying to be helpful and I'm, I'm always appreciative of that. They were given, they were giving us suggestions as, for example, paying for graduation tickets. Now, do you know any other districts that?
So I, I've had districts do this a couple of ways. If there was adequate room in a facility, what I've seen people do is they will issue X number of tickets, call it four or five per graduate. And then on top of that, they would say, and if you desire extra tickets, you can buy them for $5 a pop. That's if you have a facility that is large enough to house additional people. Yeah. That's always the concern is the, the desire. Now, I will tell you that in, in the post-COVID era, what I have seen is a lot less of that and more wanting to have the return to the outdoor, on the football field graduation because everyone got a taste of that during COVID and has really enjoyed that as an element of a high school graduation. Now, you guys can literally do whatever you want. The ceremony is optional. It is a very experiential thing. But as far as the, the charging for additional tickets, it's not an uncommon practice. You just have to have a facility that can handle it.
Okay. Okay. Another thought that these parents had was to fundraise for, to pay for a larger facility, to have Topsail High graduation. Is that?
That would be uncommon, I will tell you. I'm not, I'm not aware of, of districts that would place that burden on a particular high school to.
Illegal.
Well.
I don't necessarily, I don't, I don't necessarily know that there's a legality issue to it. What I would say is, what would have to happen is that those parents would have to provide that money to the district as a gift. The district would need to contract directly with that vendor to be the person who's the lesssee of the space for the day. And with the understanding that, you know, it is for this specific use authorized, but it, you know, there's, there are ways around it. But at the end of the day, it's, I don't necessarily see that as a booster club's responsibility.
Because the place would have to be reserved.
Which might mean a deposit.
And you'd have to have a backup plan if it don't work, if there's not enough money.
What happens the following year if the parents don't want to raise money?
It's up to them to raise it again, I guess.
I can tell you that the superintendent reached out from New Hanover and wanted to know, like, could we come together and do that? They graduate a whole week later than us.
Then that would be a no.
We would have to hold off because they were thinking it'd be a discounted price for their high schools and our high school. We could have one day. They could have, you know, what they needed. But in order to do that, we would have to, either they would have to graduate their students early, or we would have to hold our students a whole week and a half.
We can't, we can't be worried about what New Hanover's doing.
How much, I mean, money wise, it would have helped us out.
It would, but I mean, as far as our schedule, so we can't.
We're not going to hold back our students. No.
We also can't be, I mean, you can't really be charging people for a ticket to come to a graduation of their child or something. I mean, that's.
Well, we would give them a certain amount free and then we would charge thereafter, but.
I like the idea. I understand what everybody, and it's true. We used to do, we would have TRASC first. TRASC High School would be first and then immediately after would be Topsail. And then the next morning was Pender High School at their place. Now, yes, Pender does have a much larger gym than anybody else. That's true. And that was part of the reason. I have no idea what it used to cost back then. Don't have any idea what the charge is now.
Who knows? Does, does anybody here know what it would cost? I got on their website to try and figure it out, but.
Last time we were there was in 2018. At that time, they were kind of moving away from schools using the facility. The cost is, is, the rental cost is 10 pages and I was just trying to pull it up. I don't have a final cost yet. But remember, we have to hire like security. It's a lot that goes into the rental fees.
And it was probably, and remember, that's 20, I guarantee it's double now.
So it's $8,000? Yeah, it was $8,791. So I anticipate that it's probably doubled by now. And that was 2018.
And they also.
It's $12,000 right now, but the thing of what we would also need to look into, does that include janitorial? Does that include parking attendants? Does that include security?
HVAC, AC, event staffing, parking, setup and breakdown, building manager, event manager, housekeeping, cleanup, UNCW police, dumpster.
Because they bring you by the hour per thing.
My gosh, you're looking at twice that much. You're looking at at least $20,000 by that point.
Well, I mean, if people, if people want to try to raise it and, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I just, I don't know if it's, we just have to know by a certain time.
Even back then, we had to resort to tickets, even back then at Topsail High School because it is a max, it's a fire code that they have to abide by.
Well, I'm worried too, but what about the part about UNCW? It sounds like they don't want anybody to have a graduation there. I mean, they were trying to move away from it, right?
That was 2018. I don't know if it's the same.
That's different people now, probably, but.
I was on the phone with a parent last night and one of the, about this same thing. And one of the options that I thought about was, I know Wilson Center?
Wilson Center is probably smaller than the football field.
It is, but do we know what the capacity of the Wilson Center is? Because I know that CFCC would probably work with us a lot more readily than, not that UNCW wouldn't work with us, but.
I'm not sure what their capacity is, but the number of students and we, I mean, we would probably have to limit the number of tickets to four. If, if not, less.
Yes, probably less. Because we have, we have.
Well, but that would be part of the price that they would pay for air conditioning and a guaranteed time and date for graduation regardless of.
This says 15, around 1500.
And when we have Pender Early College graduation at the Wilson Center.
1500 this capacity? Okay.
It's packed at the Wilson Center when we have Pender Early College graduation.
Right.
With about 25 graduates, even though we let anyone come in, but it's packed with Pender Early College with 25 students. Just to take that into consideration.
Yeah, the first floor is full.
Yeah. And if you're talking 1500, you're talking three.
A graduate's got to sit somewhere.
I think it'd be limited to the parents. I, I think it only, I mean, I'm just estimating. I am a mathematician. I would say for the Wilson Center, it would be limited probably to the parents coming with no additional gifts.
Very similar to inside the gym if it's.
Well, I don't, I doubt, people wanting to move back to UNCW may not realize that it had all this stuff attached. And that's not the item to vote, the, the only item we can vote on today that's on the agenda are the dates. So if everybody wants to discuss that, we need to do that at a different meeting for, you know, about UNCW or whatever when we've got more information on it.
And if we have the date, it would be easier as far as.
Well, that's true. They've got to have a date to know.
If anything needed to happen.
Well, the rate may change depending on what date it is.
Got that right.
I mean.
During the week versus the weekend.
I mean, trust me, someone from UNCW will hear about this eventually. They may decide to up the rate. I mean, I'm just kidding about that, but.
Okay, do we have a preference between current proposed dates and new proposed dates? Would anybody like to, to discuss the pros and cons versus these?
I'm sure I think we did, in a way.
Not really.
Well, not really. Yeah.
So current proposed dates were took, we're looking at what, two?
Two days.
Two days versus the, if, four?
Yeah.
And the current proposed dates are the dates that the principals have said, we prefer this day and this time specifically?
Well, they surveyed everybody. Did I say we go with the current ones?
It's consistent with what they've done in the past four years.
Not necessarily. Pender High had theirs evening and day.
Sometimes they swap. Yes, yes.
I make a motion, we approve the current proposed dates for Pender County High School graduations.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Make a second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? All, any opposed? Okay, we are unanimous, we have current proposed dates for our high school graduation in 2026.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this time, it appears that I overlooked the approval of the HR report, which means that we are going to have to go back and do a real quick change to the agenda. Do I have a motion to change the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we add the HR report and, did we adjourn closed session or did we recess it?
I did, I believe we voted to adjourn closed session, did we not?
Then in that case, I'd also make an amendment that we have a very short closed session, whatever item number that would be. After, can we do it, because we get, we need to finish something, right, or are we gonna wait?
No, we're done.
Oh, then I'll take that back.
We're done. Mr. McPherson and I discussed it and that one particular item was something that we could wait until that next month.
Perfect. Then I make a motion that we amend the agenda to add the HR report as presented.
It's 12.4.
Be 12.4 and.
Second. We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I guess now, was that approving the HR report, Mr. McPherson, or do we need to go ahead?
That was just adding it.
Okay, 12.4 approval of HR report, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion, Mr. Spivey, do we have a second?
Second, Tommy did it.
Thank you, we have a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with that, we are, our, oh my goodness, we have comments from board members, yes we do, and I was ready to go. Okay, we're gonna start with comments from board members, Mr. Reeves.
Madam Chair, I don't have anything, I'm ready to go.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, Mr. Spivey?
I have none, no.
Okay, Mr. Hall?
Have nothing.
Ms. Hanson?
Oh, no, I've got something.
There she goes.
Come on now. I just wanted to give a, a thank you to the staff at CF Pope for letting me come out the first day and getting those kids out of the cars. It's nothing quite like seeing a kindergartner get out of the car for the first time with those backpacks bigger than they are, you know, walking in the school. That was a lot of fun. And I wanna say, I don't know that we've said it yet, but I wanna give a, a shout out and say happy 50th anniversary to Pender High School and I wish them well in their celebrations this year. And if the board and/or cabinet are interested, the homecoming parade is, is October the 3rd. If you would like to be in the parade, I have a trailer and a truck and we can certainly be in the parade.
We're doing it.
I will be back in touch with all of you, I'll get in touch with Paquette to figure out what we're gonna do and the, the time and all. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. First of all, I did wanna address one thing that one of our public comments, one of our public commenters addressed tonight was about the changes, the legislative changes to the calendar law. And I just wanted to let them know that we, we are aware of those changes and I believe that we will probably be addressing them in the future, is that correct? Dr. Breedlove? The, the changes to the NC calendar law.
It, it didn't pass.
Oh, it didn't pass yet? I'm sorry, my mistake, I thought it had.
The House is not gonna hear.
Okay.
So it's the way it is now.
Null and void then, okay, thank you very much. First and second thing I wanted to address was 15 of 18 of our schools met or exceeded growth. We cannot say that enough because that is a huge, huge accomplishment. And I would like to say congratulations to Dr. Breedlove, his staff, all the principals, all the teachers, everyone who touches our children's lives in our schools contributed to this and you should be extremely proud because it is a massive achievement and I cannot say it enough, it's huge. And I noticed when all the staff was up here, giving the presentation tonight, it's not lost on me that this is always a balancing act between what we have, which this lady takes care of right here, and what all of you are hearing from your staff as to what they need. I will say, given that we had the presentation that we had tonight with the performance of our schools, the perform, and the presentation of the audit of the performance of our finance department, I can tell you that there is absolutely no doubt in my mind that this is a well-oiled machine that we have going on here and that we have a lot of people who work very well together and I commend all of them. You make us what we are and proof was in the pudding tonight and I thank you for that. One last thing, Brett Novarton, take a bow. Everything that you and your transportation department has done in the past two weeks has been nothing short of miraculous. I don't care what anybody else says, I'm saying it tonight, thank you. You, you have succeeded in your job, I know that you still have some things left to do, but I can tell you from that first day to yesterday has been such an unreal improvement and I put that on you, sir, and I thank you for that, okay? And while I'm on the roll, let's talk about Special Olympics tomorrow night. At 5:30 tomorrow afternoon, Pender County Special Olympics is gonna have their kickoff meeting at Heidi Trask. I will tell you that I'm extremely excited about this, this is, last year, our EC students had to go to New Hanover, I think down at Ashley High School, was it, almost an hour away? And please understand, I am so unbelievably grateful for New Hanover for giving our students that opportunity because I'm not so sure they, you know, we could have pulled it off one more time, but I, it was good to get the experience of going to a real Special Olympics event and I think everyone learned something from it. And I know that all of our students who attended definitely got something from it. But it's kind of prompted us to real, to take a look back and say, could we do this? Well, thanks to a collaboration between Pender County Schools and Pender County Parks and Rec, yes, we will. And that all starts out at, like I said, 5:30 tomorrow night at Heidi Trask High School, we need volunteers. We need people to join us for our committee, we need people who know how to fundraise, we need people who know how to lead, and more importantly, we have, we need people with a heart to come out and start making this thing great from the start. So with that, I will stop talking now and I will turn it over, I believe, to our board attorney.
Madam Chair, I have new comments this evening.
Yeah, that's because I had them all. So at this time, we have come to the end of our agenda and this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.